Public meeting to order. First item will be Declaration of the Corum. We have six members of the seven here. Deb Boxer out sick this evening. So, welcome to the September 9th meeting of the Town of Standish Planning Board. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding. Unless the Board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all exhibits that are offered. Please notify me if you are unable to hear or see the material. The Board works from a prepared agenda, and this evening we have approval of the July 8th minutes. We have one finding of facts to review for approval. One item of old business, which is Cram Road, visioned by Yates, yeah, I'll get it out, Yates Builders. And we have four items on the new business, which we go through those one at a time. And then, if we have time, we have a public hearing on a section of Chapter 181. The applicant has the burden to prove to the Board that their application is complete and meets all applicable Town standards. Any person wishing to address the Board may do so in accordance with the following procedures. Please utilize the podium or one of the provided microphones. The Board will open the public hearing for the applicant to present their project. The Town Planner will provide his assessment of the project and hear responses from the applicant. Board members will then ask questions and hear responses. The hearing will then be opened to the public for comment, and the applicant can respond to those comments. The Board may receive any oral or documentary evidence, but such evidence is restricted to the subject matter of the agenda item. The Board shall exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. Citizens shall refrain from interrupting other speakers. This meeting is being tape-recorded, and is very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Citizens shall avoid personal attacks and conduct themselves in a civil courteous manner as expected by all participants. Seven, all questions should be addressed through the Chair. Speakers shall not attempt to engage in debate with other meeting participants. And eight, upon hearing from the public, the hearing will be closed for that application, and the Board will deliberate and vote on the application. Following the decision on the application, either towards the end of the meeting or at the Board's next regular meeting, the Board will prepare written findings of facts and approve them for the records. Okay. First item will be the approval of the previous July 8th meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Any further discussion by the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I was absent.
One abstained. Five pro, four, and one abstained. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda will be the Finding of Facts by Jenny and Paul Franceschi, 31 Ward Cove Road. It's a modification in a showland zoning. Board had a chance to review these?
I did.
There a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, been moved and seconded to accept the Finding of Facts. Any further discussion by the Board? Seeing none, all those in favor? One abstained, five and four, five and one, excuse me.
I'd like to make a motion to end the meeting at 9:00 PM tonight.
Motion to end the meeting at 9:00 PM this evening? Is there a second on that?
Can I recommend if the Board wants to limit the length of the meeting, that it not necessarily be a hard deadline, that you at least finish up the item you're on? And that we have the public hearing, because that will mess up the Council's vote process on that ordinance change if we don't have that.
I would recommend like a 15-minute warning before 9:00, maybe? To add to my motion? Everyone wants to go past 9:00? Okay.
I'm confused. You want to be like an 8:45, make a notification, or you want to?
Yeah.
15 minutes either side of the night.
So, like, for that public meeting, if we need to stop to do the public meeting, which I think we can do in 15 minutes? Someone has to second the motion to...
I just want to make sure I get the motion. The motion is to stop the regular meeting at 8:45, more or less, and hold the public hearing on the amendment.
Yes.
Sir, I can't hear anything you people said. And I have hearing aids. So, you told, you said to speak up if anyone couldn't hear you.
Okay.
That's me.
All right. We'll try to be a little louder.
Put your mic a little closer.
Well, I assume these are on. Is there a speaker anywhere?
Yeah, it's usually piped in.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to Andrew's motion? Seeing none, motion fails.
Guess we're going to be here a while.
Okay. Well, let's move right along. Old business, Cram Road, Yates Builders.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Keith Richard, attorney for Archipelago, on behalf of Yates Builders. I do want to make a brief presentation. I promise not to use an undue amount of time. My client is here tonight, Development Team. As the Board is aware, this is a 20-lot subdivision that was to be constructed in two phases. It's been pending for quite a while, and the issue that was holding up the final action on the subdivision application was whether there was sufficient right title and interest to improve Cram Road, which is to provide access to the subdivision. It's my understanding that your attorney, Jensen Baird, Mark Bauer... Mark Bauer has provided a memo to the Board. I hope that you've had a chance to review it. That memo is dated August 27th, and that memo lays out three different options for the Board in dealing with this issue. And I'm here to urge the Board to go with option number one, because I think that that is the correct course as a matter of legal interpretation. It's also, I think, as a practical matter, the most straightforward way for the Town to get out of the way of any potential private property dispute that exists with the Butters regarding this improvement of the road. So, the option one is for the Board to find that Yates Builders has sufficient right title and interest, such that the subdivision application can be finally acted upon. And I think if you reviewed the letter that I submitted and the memo together, Mark and I actually agree, we're one-to-one on what the legal standard is. And to show right title and interest, the main courts generally require that someone has what's called a legally cognizable expectation. Cognizable. Cognizable means capable of being recognized. It doesn't mean that you have a present interest. It means that it's possible that you will have a legal interest sufficient to use the permit in the way that the Board would be acting upon and granting. It doesn't require an irrefutable right. It just means the possibility that someone can get a legal right to use the permit. And I think that that standard is meant to be a very, very low threshold, because this Planning Board, you hear technical information, you hear from surveyors, engineers. Part of your review process in interpreting ordinances and deciding permit applications is to apply those standards. But what you usually don't have to do is examine hundreds of years of deeds and ambiguous records around the discontinuance of a road to try to figure out what in the world the applicant or any of Butters' private rights might be. And there's a good reason for that, because the determination of what people's rights are, their private property rights, is for courts, it's not for Planning Boards to try to adjudicate. We can't have a trial about title, because that involves a lot of documents, a lot of expertise, potentially expert witnesses. It's just not within the purview of your ordinary review of an application. So, the question is, does the, you know, usually it's, does the applicant own the property? Are they not even, are they a total stranger? And will they acquire the rights that they need to build and use the property as proposed? I want to emphasize one particular case from the Maine Supreme Court, Southridge Corp., and that was about Fun Town over in Saco, Fun Town Splash Town. Fun Town was before the State seeking approval for a project that included a septic design. And that septic was located on the Butters' property. Fun Town didn't have any present title ownership interest of where the proposed septic was. The Superior Court looked at that and said, "You don't have right title and interest. You don't presently own the property. You can't get a permit related to that septic design." The Maine Supreme Court held that the trial court was wrong, that in fact, the mere possibility of Fun Town going to court and saying that they've acquired that property by adverse possession was enough to satisfy right title and interest. So, in the court, and reaching that decision acknowledged, it's possible that Fun Town is going to lose their adverse possession case if they proceed to trial and there's a decision. But that does not deprive the applicant of their administrative standing, their right title and interest. And that was the holding of that case. I think it applies in this situation. We have, Yates Builders has right title interest now, because either we have the possibility that we can obtain easements or whatever agreements that are necessary with the Butters to improve the road, or, and this is not a preferred course, we could file a legal action, naming the town, naming each of the Butters along the portion of the discontinued road, and ask the court. They could make various arguments, there are various legal theories that would allow my client to build out the road to the full width required by Town standards. But we don't have to prove that now. This Board is just reviewing whether that's possible. And really, finding that there's no right title and interest would be a finding that my client has no standing at all to propose a subdivision. We have no standing to even propose a subdivision because of a title issue that has been raised by, really, my understanding is, I'm not sure where the origin was of it, but it's been something that obviously your Town Council is concerned about. I understand the Board might be concerned about it. But again, the idea that there's no standing, that would be a legal error based on what the Maine Supreme Court says an applicant has to show. And ultimately, option one is to keep the town out of it. Any disagreement by any of the Butters along the discontinued portion, that's a dispute between those parties. The town, we don't need, the town doesn't have an ownership interest in that issue. Your ordinances don't look at those issues beyond just the basic threshold of right title and interest. And the Maine Municipal Association has actually spoken on this subject as well. What the Maine Municipal Association says is that if a Board has an application and someone has raised whether someone has right title and interest, the way that you can handle that is you can approve the application, and as part of the application approval, state explicitly that it's not a title opinion, that we're not adjudicating title, and that the perma team may be well-advised to verify their rights by whatever means they need to before they rely on it. And the way this would work is it removes the town entirely from any sort of disagreement, because any dispute would have to be resolved by those private parties. You have satisfied your obligations under the ordinances to say this applicant has right title and interest, and we're not going to look any deeper as to what objections there could be, any arguments there could be. And it really focuses you back on what you're used to doing, which is applying your ordinance standards. And that's what you should do in this case, on this application. I received a comment from one of the Butters, the Reddings, which are one of the Butters along the discontinued portion of the road. I reviewed those comments. I believe that those concerns were raised before, in prior hearings before this Board, and have been addressed. There are some concerns raised about the language of the easement document that was provided related to the road improvement. But importantly, Mr. and Mrs. Redding don't appear to actually object on right title and interest grounds, or say that they own the portion of the road that would be improved. They have some concerns about how it would work and the logistics of that, but I don't think that that is an objection to right title and interest, or bringing to your attention any evidence or argument as to the absence of right title and interest. So, and I might be wrong, the Board's going to hear from the public on this. I personally haven't seen any direct objection by a Butter to the right title and interest issue. We have obtained easements from several of the Butters nearby. We don't have them all. That happened before I was retained by Yates Builders. But my position on the matter is that we could continue that process, and whether we're ultimately successful would be between us and those Butters. And it shouldn't be an obstacle to the Board acting on the application. The other issue is around the acceptance of the public street, and I think that's not ripe for decision at this point. Any decision to accept a public street would be made by the Town Council. It's not part of this Board's review. So, that possibility sometime in the future, I think, would have to be looked at at the time that that comes before the Town Council, and would be for the Town Council to decide. So, to conclude, I maintain that Yates Builders has right title and interest, sufficient to meet that low standard, because either we could acquire the rights and agreements from the Butters, or pursue a legal action against everybody that would leave it to the court to adjudicate whether we can improve the road. And that's really all the law requires at this juncture of the application.
Okay, thank you. Jim, did you want the design staff to make a presentation relative to where we stand?
My name is Craig Sweet with Terradine Consultants. I just wanted to briefly go over the project, as you guys saw it last year in June, I believe. So, Scott has it pulled up on the screen there. We're currently proposing a 12 lots with four lots along an extension of Cram Road, and eight lots off of a proposed new road, Yates Road, with potential for a future, eight lots expansion to the north, to the top of the page on that. Since we last met with the Board, we've obtained the Maine DEP stormwater permit, the NERPA Tier 1, and the Army Corps of Engineers wetland impact permit. So, we have all state and federal permits required for the construction of Phase 1. The homes are going to be served by wells, individual wells and septics, and then all the stormwater was going to be treated by vegetated buffers and leveled up spreaders. And currently proposed extension of Cram Road was 22-foot wide with 1.5-foot shoulders on each side. And there's ditching, and we've done culvert designs of crossings of the road, and the drainage of the whole watershed going to it and the neighboring properties. For Yates Road, we had 22-foot wide travel lane with a five-foot strip section for pedestrian traffic, and then one and a half-foot shoulders on each side of that road as well. And then, Steve, you could go to, Scott, if you could go to the one, I just wanted to show the, briefly show the phasing. We talked about this in our initial, so everything in the bolded area to the right of the page would be the future phase, which would include additional open space, future connectivity to the neighboring property, should anything be developed on that property in the future, and then eight additional lots. And that has not been permitted on the state and federal level yet. We'd come back in front of the Board for that, should everything go for that. And then, just to recap, one other thing was, Phase 1 had 36, about 36 and a half acres of open space proposed. And then, all said and done with Phase 2, it would be about 46 acres. Right now, it's 36.41 is what we had there.
Scott, did you want to add anything?
We did. The Board just received the recent comment from the third-party engineer. There's a few bullet points, I think, still to be addressed, but as noted, that just came in today, so the applicant hasn't had much time to put together a response to that. I can speak to, I looked at those, read them over today. Nothing that I saw as major. They wanted some more additional stuff on some ditching, clarifications and details, but all stuff we have there, we can provide the details for. No major, nothing major, no major concerns.
If we take a step back from the right title and interest question and just look at the remaining review items, just to have something to talk about here, I think that the Board, if it resolves completeness, could consider a preliminary approval at this meeting. I do not believe that we could do final. We do not have any information on performance guarantees, capital impact fees. There's been no stated information on fire prevention. At one point, the applicant stated they were going to use a cistern, and then no information was then submitted from it. I've included, I'm assuming this means that we're moving to sprinkle the houses, but I don't know. And that's going to cover the highlights from what we definitely, I think, again, maybe we could consider preliminary, but not final.
Board members, thoughts? Comments?
Could you speak to the fire protection?
Yeah, we had, Jim, I don't remember if you were going to do, we were kind of put that on pause while we figured out the right title of interest for, would address that at final, but Jim would be able to...
Jim, with Yates Builders, just to address that question, we have decided to go with a sprinkler system in the homes on that due to the cost of a, it'd be a two-system cistern, and it's just a lot more cost-effective to put individual sprinklers in each home. So, that'll be our fire protection protocol.
Thank you. Anyone else? Carolyn?
I think before we talk about the regular plan, there should be some resolution that's before us legally. And when I look at the form that we got, our Town Attorney told us, it's our opinion that they need to obtain a release deed from Manley Smith or heirs. There's only one heir that I know of, that's not a hard, it's not a hard thing to do, right? And then, and Finney. So, I don't know if anybody's approached those two people to try to get right title and interest?
So, with that question, we have received the easement paperwork from Finney, from Mike Finney, the heir of John Finney, who owns the property. He's the executor of his estate. So, we do have that easement paperwork from him. And as far as the other person, we've gone back to the last deed records of who had the rights to that road, and that is what we put in, and that's who we have. The last recorded rights was what we have. We didn't go back further, because there was no need to. We have the rights in our deed that we showed you, the rights to that road. So, to go back further, well, there was someone that owned that before the person you just said. We could go to that heir and that heir, but...
Right.
We went to what's in our deed. It is written in our deed specific. It isn't, it's black and white, it's as clear as day, that we have rights to that, and then we also got the rights from Mr. Finney. So, we have showed that.
So, in the packet that we received from our Town Attorney, there's a different opinion.
Your attorney has a different opinion than both my attorneys have, which doesn't make it right. So, that's where it goes to the next course.
No, so, I'm looking for the advice from our Town Attorney, the heir to, who clearly spelled it out, which I'm sure you got a copy of this.
We got a copy of it.
Right, so...
And we went to the extent of getting the last recorded deed of what we needed to. I can keep going and going, and I got to stop this process at some time when you guys are wrong. And we believe your attorney's wrong, and you guys are wrong at this point. So, we're drawing the line to what, Keith Richards back here has went back 100 years in deed research, and has found that evidence of what we need. That's it. This isn't a court of law. We're not here to fight my deed.
Right.
My deed is, it's in my deed. That's all you guys should look at. It's in my deed. Your attorney doesn't recognize that? I don't know what to tell you. You got a bad attorney.
Well...
It's giving you bad advice, because it's going to end up at the court of law.
Scott, do you have the deed that he's talking about?
I mean, I have his deed, yeah. He submitted it in the original packet.
Right. And so, what we've been informed is that the person that, well, I mean, you can see it, right? That the person that conveyed the land to you did not appear to have the interest, so...
You've got the same response from your attorney three times.
Right. So, I don't want to argue, and I don't want to make any kind of legal opinion. I am certainly in no place to do that. And I personally do not want to put the onus on any other citizen in Standish to have any kind of legal battle for any action that we take. And I do think that that's something that needs to be resolved before we can move forward, if you are even at all thinking of having this taken over as a town road. So, there's other things, to me, that appear missing from the application. So, I don't think that it's complete, not only for the right title and interest, but I don't see where, I forgot my glasses here. We don't have the conceptual long-range development plan, the financial capacity, the draft deed/ covenant for the open space, the HOA stormwater, can't even read my own writing, maintenance plan for the open space, a cistern, details for fire prevention. So, I'm inclined to vote that we find, I mean, I would move that we find the application submitted on behalf of Yates Builders not to be complete for a preliminary review, due to those five reasons and the lack of right title and interest in the portions of land to be developed as part of the subdivision, going by what advice I get from our Town Attorney.
Well, I would request from the Planning Board one thing this evening. We've held off from giving you the other points, because everything costs money, and you've already got me spending a lot of engineering money, to the point where after the fact came up the right title and interest on this property, not pre-engineering plans and DEP permitting and all this. So, I'm sorry if I'm taken a little back, but I need you guys to make a decision on right title and interest. Your attorney gave three options. I would like you guys to vote one, two, or three on those options, and tell me which one you want, because I can't keep doing this every three months, four months, six months, and carry this out any longer. It's not fair to the Butters. It's not fair to me, and we need to have a decision on this. On that one item is holding us up. Everything else is easy to get. It's just, as far as Mr. Sweet gives you that information, I just gave you the information on fire protection. That's nothing. But the right title and interests have held us up... But the right title and interests have held us up for over two years on this. And your attorney, like you said, has given you three options. You guys can take a vote if you'd like, and pick which option you'd like, and we'll pursue that one.
So, I just made a motion for option two.
Okay. Give me the option two. Seconded by Andrew. We're only talking about the right title and interest in the road, the discontinued road, not the property itself. Am I correct by saying that?
Mm-hmm. I think.
I have a couple of questions, Charlie.
Well, you've got a motion on, oh, is this relative to the motion?
Relative to the topic, not the motion. I have questions about the topic of right title interest. I can wait until...
I would like to hear them.
I think we can discuss that.
Yeah.
As part of the right title and interest that we're going with.
Okay. So, my question is, I'd have to say, this is the first time in the three years I've been on the board, that there was a question of right title and interest on a project that is before us to approve. So, this is new to me. I have a lot of engineering skills, but I don't have many lawyering skills, so I can't speak to it from a legal standpoint. But my question is, is there an end game? Is there, is this going to get resolved at some point? Is there more right title and interest that you need, or is your position, I have enough, I'm going to proceed, as long as the board approves the project? Or is there more work that you have to do to prove right title and interest?
Might be better said for Mr. Richard.
Okay.
He's a little more versed in that, and I'm not too legally...
I don't think there's any more work to be done, and I didn't specifically, I'm not addressing anything about, I mean, I could show you, here's the chain of title for Finney, here's the, but I don't think that that's what this board's job is, respectfully.
It's not.
I think that the resolution, if someone wants to raise that, is for a court, but that could occur in connection with when the buildout occurs. That could occur in connection with any, an appeal filed from this decision. But what we're facing is, we just need a decision, one way or another, so that, you know, there might be any number of options to resolve it, by agreement, through a lawsuit, through other means, by abandoning the project altogether, but to just be in a holding pattern, I think, is the problem.
I understand, okay.
That's why, from reading this, that's why it appeared that two people, or two specific people, need to be consulted. Manley Smith is the heir, which is Margaret, and then Finney. So, it seemed to me like if you had approached those two people and got easements, then it would be a moot point, because you'd have, you'd have the documentation you needed later on to get the road approved by the town. But if you don't, I don't even know if you, so you told me that you got Finney, but...
I told you, I got, Michael Finney gave me the easement.
Right.
On the other side of my property. I own the side of my property, and in my deed, it has the description of the rights to that road. What I'm asking the town to accept is those two facts. I mean, I have it. You want to go back to, I keep forgetting the name, Bartel, or?
John Bartel, yes.
Okay, that, that's, I don't know how many previous deeds before the one I got, with the terminology of the rights to the road in that. So...
Could you read those?
Deed is a deed, it's a legal document, it's registered with the state, and that shows it in my deed, the property that Bartel had. I have it in my deed, written. Finney, I do not, right? That's the other side of my project. I got that from Mr. Finney.
Could you read the section in your deed that gives you the rights to the road? Do you have a copy of that deed?
You guys have all of that. You've received transcripts of it. I don't have it with me, no. Do you have that, Scott?
Assuming that he means the deed mentioned in the last bullet point under item two, on page two of the lawyer, of our Mark's memo, where they talk about Cummings and Flore conveying.
Right.
To Yates, the whatever any rights they may have in the road.
We don't have that deed. What we have is a deed from Daniel Doyle to Yates Builders, Inc.
Correct. You had an amendment to that deed that we got from Flore and Cummings.
I mean, I, we definitely have, I don't know in the back and forth if that ended up in your packets, but we do have that deed.
Okay.
Which I can read it for you, if you have, if you take...
I don't have it, that's why I was asking.
Charlie, it's right here. I don't, I don't have the ability to print it for you quick, but... But it is the deed discussed in Mark's memo, the last bullet point under section two, and then in the paragraph following.
When we trace the deeds back, the deed that Dan Doyle got from Mark Flore and Jim Cummings, the last page is that paragraph. The last page, the only thing on that last page was that paragraph that got left out of Dan Doyle's.
Just to summarize, again, I'm not an attorney either, but to summarize, the town's attorney, or I can read it to you, I guess, is that, summarize, the Cummings and Flore had in the deed, when they purchased this land, this line saying that any interest that Doyle had in the road was conveyed along with the parcel. It was dropped from the deed to Alexander Bartel, which was, and they went back and had it reinstated. The issues that our attorney states is that the deed that Alexander and Bartel got prior to transfer, when they purchased the land, did not have any explicit rights to the road expelled out in that deed. So, any rights that they had, and in this sentence in here is, any, I believe, is any interest they may have, is that, the question is, did they have any interest? And that is my understanding of what town attorney has said in their letter.
Well, that kind of makes sense. We didn't have that deed, though, so I couldn't...
I'm surprised.
No way I could analyze that.
Apologize for that, Charlie. That's probably on me, that I didn't get that in there.
I had a comment on the motion, but that's okay, I'm waiting.
Go right ahead.
I have no issue with, since Mr. Bates has secured the release deed, I have no issue with the fact of this title issue. I won't be supporting the motion. I think we need to move, I don't think we have the ability to move this to final approval, but I do think we have preliminary. I think the letter, which I read last week in extension, from our lawyers, it was, you know, the, I think it's, we have sufficient cause to move this thing forward. I think we're, if the, if the abutters want to sue, that's on them, but this is something where, you know, Mr. Yates has provided enough information, and this has been going on for, before I was even on the board. But I read the last two years of minutes, so I've not missed anything. I have no issue or concern, and as per the thing, I think we should not grant final approval, but I think we should have granted preliminary approval and give him the, in a sense, per the thing, and move it forward.
Where I get stuck with that, Mr. Chairman, is that eventually, it's going to come before the board, or for the, to the town council, for it to become a public road. And normally, you would want that to become a public road, right?
Always, no.
Well...
And it's not a guarantee that the town takes it over as a road either.
It's not a guarantee, that's right.
Whether it's, no matter what, and the way the town's going, I wouldn't be surprised I own that road for ten, fifteen years, and I'm privately maintaining it. That's my, that's my feeling, and that's not a bad feeling I have, but I just don't think the town, with all the building and the infrastructure going on, and the economic standards that we are with the town, I don't think they're going to take over a mile-long road until it's absolutely necessary. I'll probably come in front of the board a half dozen times and get denied.
Well...
But that's at that, that's for me to be concerned at that time, and keep a private road association going, and maintain that road as I, I need to. And it's what we need in this, it's what we need in this town, is we need some affordable housing, we need some rural housing, and we need spaces for people to live. And this is an absolutely perfect, beautiful lot, not to consider it being landlocked, because I have three people that live on a dirt road, and they don't want their privacy to be taken away from them.
Yeah, that's, that does not factor into my thinking. My thinking is, I'm just looking at the language of the deed from my attorney, thinking that you would want to have a private road. I selfishly would like, a public road, I selfishly would like it to be a public road, because I see that as giving access to other lots. There's the back lot, Sawyer, there's the side lot, Finney, and I'm thinking to myself, it behooves Finney to give you the easement, because it puts him on a, on a major road or a public road, and I can't imagine why the heir to Manley Smith would not want to work with you for that, and that would be easy to obtain, seemingly to me, so why not just do those two things, get it done and move on? That's my big question. But until that's done, then I'm following the legal advice I'm getting from the town, good, bad, or indifferent. I feel compelled to do that in this role.
I understand.
Any further discussion by the board? Before we vote, I know we have a motion on the floor. We have to open this up to the public first?
I mean, I don't think there's any requirement that you have a public hearing prior to completeness vote, but it is your discretion, you absolutely can.
One question. I'm just curious, could someone just say what the wording of the actual motion is for, because we just mentioned motion two. I just wanted to make sure I understood what the actual wording of the motion is that you guys are going to be voting on.
Is it number, is it number two?
Yeah. Want to just read it?
Please.
I mean, I went with, I moved to find the application submitted by Terranine Consultants on behalf of Yates Builders for a subdivision of the properties at map six, lots forty-five and thirty-two A1, is not complete for preliminary review, due to the lack of right title or interest in portions of the land to be developed as part of the subdivision. I think it's, as aside, I included, I think it's not complete for other five reasons that I mentioned, but the main one I think that we need to resolve is the first one.
I understand, that's what I keep coming back for.
See Margaret, like, why aren't you doing that?
Yeah, well, we haven't got a straight answer from your attorney to do that. You're the first one that says, is that going to, if we got a easement from Margaret, that's, that's going to appease the board and, and make everything...
When I read this, it seems like the holdouts are the heir to Manley Smith, who has the fee interest in the road. I don't know all the correct legal terms, but she's the one that has that, as the heir, and the other one is the owner on the other side of the street. Is that what everybody else is taking away from this?
No.
Well, if you're saying, that's what I get when I read this.
The attorney referred to the one which would come from the Smiths as a release deed. In other words, correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, that would release any and all right title and interest they might have in that street. That's typically what I've seen in the past, but I'm not the attorney. He's sitting right behind you, we can elaborate that, if I've interpreted that wrong.
Well, I mean, you can, we could...
A release deed, just, a release deed would be somebody releasing whatever right they have in it, is that...
Right, and it's not, it's not affirming that they have any right title and interest.
Exactly, but if they have any, it releases it.
It's done in these situations where there's ambiguity, and the historical record isn't clear. These discontinued road cases are some of the most complicated legal issues to unpack, I think, in real estate law. And it's, it's a pressing issue, because it keeps coming up, and will come up more as subdivisions are proposed around the state.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, is that something that you think is a reasonable thing to do, that Caroline?
Well, it's not going to, that doesn't solve everything, because we got to show there are a few more abutters.
This, this, when I read the information from the town attorney, he references two things. He references the heir to Manley Smith and Finney.
I mean, there are, either, again, I'm not the attorney, but either Smith owns retained rights of the entire roadway, and therefore is the sole owner of that land, or in the discontinuance, it reverted to the abutters of the land, which, again, was that person, which is where this argument is coming from, or the current owners of those lots have rights to the center line, and there are more than just Finney affected by that.
Well, I didn't see anything about that in this document from the town attorney.
On page three, he only references to the top paragraph.
Which I, I don't believe is fully, again, either one person owns the whole road, or the abutters own the road, and there are more than just Finney involved.
And I don't mean to be coy about it, it's just that I don't think, like, this entire discussion is not usually what a planning board does. You know, if, if that was the presentation I was giving, it would have brought all the deeds, would have walked, done a presentation, whole chain of title, we would be going by tax map, lot number, by lot number, and we could, we could have that discussion. But I, I think that raising this, getting a release deed from the Smith heirs, that is like maybe a belt and suspenders approach that would foreclose any argument and illegal action that my client doesn't have right challenges. But I don't think that we need to go down that proverbial road at this stage, in order for there to be just, have we seen enough that this subdivision applicant, it's a subdivision application. He owns the property, he has a right to cross over the road to access the property. It's ordinarily not more complicated than that, and that's, and again, I'm not trying to hide the ball as to the board, I just don't think that trying to argue with anyone or sort through this, those issues as to each of those property owners is, is what we're supposed to be doing here.
Question, I think it was mentioned that there was a DEP approval issued for the project? Is that correct?
Correct.
Part of that approval process, does that include establishing right title and interest?
We sent, we sent a copy of the deed, and we sent one, a copy we sent to the town, to the state DEP, yeah.
They're all set?
Yeah, we have the DEP stormwater and natural resource permit, and we also have the Army Corps of Engineers wetland impact permit for the, for the property.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion relative to that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Two opposed, four.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion per the page four of our, you know, since thing, the board, you know, find that, since the board may find that the release deed to the Yates is sufficient, making an affirmative, finding a right, title and interest, and proceed with a view of subdivision application. It just means that we're not giving approval, I'm just saying we're giving him the right and title and ending that issue, sending it to the town council, let them deal with whatever issues come down the road. I'm just saying, that would resolve it for Mr. Yates and creates a situation where we at least, you know, if they, abutters want to sue or do things, and leave that to the town council, but per the letter here, things like that.
So, they're referring to item one under the attorney's reference?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that one? Is there a second to that one?
Is all seconded.
Seconded to, and I'll just refer to item one under the attorney's actions, the board may find that the release deed to the Yates is sufficient making an affirmative finding of right title and interest and proceed with the review of the subdivision application. Is that?
Yeah, I'm not approving the subdivision, I'm just saying the title, we're just, we're just doing the title part and then we'll move on to the next part. Like eating an elephant, one bite at a time.
Because we just received this evening another twenty items that need to be addressed, so.
Yeah.
There are items out there. For the discussion by the board.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, in the paragraph we have from our attorney, it's in our opinion that you would need to obtain this. So we can say, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna do this, it doesn't resolve anything, it just kicks the can down the road, which, I don't know if that, if I were investing that kind of cash into a project like this, I would want some answers personally. Um, and the sooner it can be resolved, the better, but by kicking the can down the road, it doesn't really help the applicant get a concrete answer. And I just don't understand why we can't get two releases that would be pretty easy to obtain.
Because Carolyn, if there's two releases, there's gonna be five releases. That's what I'm saying. We could end up here having them drag this thing out. And the reality is, Carolyn, it's not your money, it's the, it's Yates' money. If his, no, his neighbors wanna sue him and things like that. And it's not kicking the hound down the road. As the lawyer and our lawyer said, we had three options. This option just basically puts it back in their hands. And we're not talking about the subdivision, we haven't even gotten to that. We're just dealing with the rights and title. And you got the release deed from Mr. Finney, which was the holdup I was going to have, so.
And the state permitted it?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but they, they don't care about the town taking over the road.
I have not seen an easement from Finney, no.
Can you open it up to the public? No question. It's the board's opinion. We'll open it up now. We have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we open it up to the public.
Second to that?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded, open it up to the public. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in paper? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Tony?
Yeah. Name's Anthony Folsom, resident of Standish. My thing, I can't understand this, about this, the other end of the Cram Road went through the same situation with Cliffy Marion. And I believe Dow was the abutter. And there was a camp out behind their place that they wanted access into that road again. And they could not get it. They went through the lawyers, they did everything, and they could not get access to that back land. It was a discontinued road, then after they won the verdict, Cliffy Marion bought the other half of like fifty feet on the other side, so no one can ever go through that, through that Cram Road. So why is it that they can shut down that end of the road and we can't shut down the other end of the road? I don't understand why we have one situation where they could close it, if these guys tried to come through Cliffy's yard right now, they wouldn't be getting through it. So why is it any different that the other end of the road, they can do this, and the other end they can't? Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this? Please use the podium, give us your name, please.
Matthew Markey, homeowner, landowner, sixty Cram Road. Um, yeah, very much like he just said, uh, what gives Yates the rights to my property and Mr. Swett's property? Because he has to get through our property to get to his. Those letters from the town attorney and his attorneys only address his land. They don't address the eight landowners previous to that. We have a letter when we closed our home from the town of Standish, says it's private road, it's on you. So now it's not private, it's not on us, it's not our property? That, I, I don't get it. Yes, he and I am really confused with his attorney saying, we don't see any problems with any of the other abutters, because we've all made it very clear, we're not signing. Because he's never answered our questions. He's never legally defined where this easement will be. He was fortunate enough to have a couple of people sign the easement blank. Those poor souls gave him rights to their entire property. I refuse to do that. He will not give me a legal description. I've asked for it. Another question I have that I think it really needs to be resolved, because in speaking with Mr. Yates privately, he says it's not his concern, the existing paved road, Cram Road, is nowhere near the standard that's being required of Mr. Yates for his subdivision. Who is responsible for getting the existing paved road up to standard? Because the, you cannot get construction trucks through that road. There are homeowners that will be incredibly inconvenienced. It, it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be addressed before anything else. And that's going to affect a lot of other landowners. So I, yeah, they, they need some RTIs down at that end, but there's a whole lot of RTIs closer to Route twenty-five, not Route twenty-two, um, that, that need to be addressed. And we can sue him, why do we have to sue? We're not trying to change anything. The rights should be ours. This is what has existed. We're not trying to change it, we just want things to stay how they are. And it's, it's not so much the privacy we're worried about losing, it's the property that we're paying taxes on. So, that's all I got, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Hi, my name's Dennis Swett, the owner of thirty-five Cram Road, uh, six unit. You know, there are definitely still some concerns, but looking at the print that I did today, looked at today, it appears some of the drainage ditches are beyond what would say old property line, um, not even mentioning legal access, but it appears it extends beyond the property line. And there are sections of the proposed road that are so unclear of what's there because it's all gathered and overlapped of each other. You can't tell what's old, what's new, what's proposed. Um, when I was asked to sign a, a easement, it was an open easement with zero descriptions. And I, I feel sorry for the person that signed it not knowing what they were signing, because it was in no way an easement that anybody should have been presented with, um, to sign off. And if I would've signed it, he would've had all the access he needed, because he would've blown the road all onto my land and said, see me in court if you don't like it. And I'm not saying, I don't wanna say anything bad, because that means nothing to the board and it's not for you to hear our personal opinions. We're here about what's on paper and your opinion, your opinion. Um, I would like to see better descriptions of what he's looking for. Because my first time meeting him, I said, does anything have to be touched on this dirt road? And we're looking down the hill from my driveway, and he says, we don't have to change a thing. Well, I can tell you, that's not what the post said after I said, I can't sign an easement without having setbacks, utilities, without having it spelled out what he's asking me for. Well, I did get some prints, but the prints are different than what you have on file. Where I had the most concern was overlapped, so you couldn't even see what the ledger would've said, property line, new property line. You couldn't read it, because there was big letters like eliminating that section, because he didn't want me to know what was there. Um, the end of my property line, I have a concern, the previous owner of the house at the end that sold, backfilled an area down there, and my concern is, my corner pin is now under this backfill, and that he doesn't have the setbacks that he needs at the end of the property line to meet his requirement. I could be wrong, I may be right, but there's still a lot of things that need to be answered. Um, the setbacks that he put in stakes was eight feet from my well. Goes into this banking and eight feet from where my well sits. That's where the end of construction was gonna be, I believe it was labeled. There's nothing mentioning about hammering ledge, busting the road back. Um, again, culvert stitches, the prints that I look at really don't explain to me where the true distances and markers are. Maybe it's a matter of exploding the prints, so it can be read legibly, so you can see what's actually there. So, in my opinion, we need further discussion. Thank you.
Ryan Carson, thirty Cram Road. Um, so I have two issues with this, two main issues anyways, is I live in the original Cram Farm, the two-hundred-and-four-year-old house. Um, half of my property is on the dirt section, where we own up to the middle line, and half of my property is on the paved road. We're right at the end of the paved. So, my main issue is safety. Uh, several years ago, we had a severe structure fire. And it was in the winter, and the fire department had a heck of a time getting into our road to get to our house. And that was the day after a tractor had pushed the snowbanks back. They said that if that hadn't happened, they wouldn't have been able to get to our house. You're talking about now putting in many, many more houses on this road, which obviously is gonna increase that risk. And there's been no addressing of the width of that road at all. Um, Yates is being required to put in a twenty-five-foot road with ditches and everything drainage, all of that on his section, but the very end of the road, the only access to his land, has road that is less than eighteen feet wide with no ditches, steep banks, everything. Um, I've spoken with the fire chief about this as well, and he thinks this is absurd and unsafe. Um, so that is, my main issue is safety. Uh, the second issue is, is where he staked out saying that he needed easements to is gonna destroy a two-hundred-and-four-year-old rock wall. So, you're telling me that's not my property? This has been there since the road was made. So, the fact that he thinks he can come in and take that is absurd to me. Um, so, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, my, my wife says that the streaming is not working, hasn't been working the whole time, so I don't know if we need to do anything about that.
It's not working, I'm sorry.
The, the, the recording is not working.
Recording's not working?
Yeah.
She's got work.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like, uh, Mr. Sweet to address, um, all the abutters. Uh, they all had some very powerful comments, which I think we've met with them personally, with Mr. Swett on the locations, and address them all. And he'll let you know what, what the, the factual outcome was, and not just an emotional outcome.
Am I allowed to speak? I know there's a motion out, so I wanna make sure proper procedure.
We're utilizing this as input for the motion.
Um, our design plans, we, we have not shown any of the existing walls along Cram Road to be, um, removed as part of the design. Um, as part of the surveys, we have, um, all of the proposed work for grading and drainage, um, and, and the layout of the Cram Road itself is, is within that, that right-of-way area, um, which is largely between those stone walls on the property, uh, on the, on all the properties that go down that, that area. Um, I believe, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, the capital impact fee is something to discuss, to be discussed prior to final, and that would address anything for Cram Road, the intersection, um, itself, before, prior to the project.
Yeah, typically, we do the capital impact fee, uh, as part of final approval, and I, my assumption is that would, that generally includes any off-site improvements to the public road that is needed.
So that would, that would address the, from where our design plans start to, to the main road intersection. Um, and then everything we have has been designed to town standards beyond that. Um, we have the surveyed properties from both sides, um, and I think that addresses everybody's concerns in terms of like property lines and that kind of stuff. I know there's still the other comments on the legal side, but, um, from the engineering side, we're not impacting any of the walls. Um, all drainage has been within that, that right-of-way area. Um, the only time it goes out is on that large sliver, uh, where lots one through four are, which is part of, um, Mr. Yates' property. Um, and beyond that, we've kept everything within the, the purple right-of-way line shown on the plans there.
Anyone else like to speak?
Can I rebut that statement? I'm kinda confused as to how they're not gonna-
Get to the mic first.
The microphone.
Matthew Markey, sixty Cram Road. Uh, he says it's not gonna affect Ryan's rock wall at all, but the slope that's currently there at the end of the pavement is over or right at ten degrees. And it had been marked on the plans that it has to be, uh, less than eight. And to do that, they have to put in, I don't have the plans in front of me, uh, it was between two and four feet of fill, and it's within six feet of that rock wall, you're adding two to four feet, how is that not going to affect a rock wall? And if they go, oh, well, we'll just go to the other side, then you're, Mr. Swett's, you're already eight feet from his well. So, they have not addressed. He has not met, he has not met with me personally. I, I won't speak. For anyone else, they can get up here and say it. He has not addressed me. I've asked for legal definitions of where the, yes, they've come out and they've stuck stakes in the ground. I've done this work before. Those stakes don't always hold up, so if you don't have a legal description on paper, they can come back to bite you.
Are you the second lot after the pavement ends?
We are the third lot. The first, Ryan Carson, owns par- partial of the asphalt pavement, and then the first part of the dirt road. And then Jeremy Redding and his wife are the second lot. Myself and my wife Jennifer are the third lot. Dan Doyle still owns the fourth lot. And then the fifth lot that sits right before the Finney land, uh, the homeowners here, but Dan had already signed the easement. So, she was unaware of the whole situation, that there was possibly going to be a twenty-lot subdivision, uh, built down her nice, quiet, private, dead-end road that she was the last house on. She had no idea. Um, I, I shouldn't speak for her, but, uh, so there's, that's the whole line. And then from the asphalt to his property, Mr. Swett owns everything on the opposing side of the road.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else in the public like to say anything? Seeing none, is there, oops.
Thank you, Charlie, Chair. Uh, Jeff Cutler, resident of Standish, um, comment and a question. Um, first, the comment is property rights is everything to people, especially if you pay taxes on those, on that property. And I, I do agree with Carolyn that it, that is sort of paramount to this issue. I'm not gonna debate and try to understand if, if Mr. Yates has met that criteria of satisfaction on those property rights and the interest on that. I mean, the sense I'm getting from the board is that's a legal matter, and, and so be it. But property rights for people that pay taxes on those properties, everything. And the town, whether it's through this board or the council, has a duty to protect those interests. Um, the one question I do have that concerns me tonight, and again, I am sympathetic with Mr. Yates, he deserves an answer. The poor man has sunk tons of money on this, and he needs to move forward or, or not. And I do, I'm very sympathetic. But what I don't like, and what I heard tonight with his attorney, is sort of a subtle threat, that if they don't get what they want, they're gonna sue the town and they'll sue the abutters. And then I think Mr. And then I think Mr. Delaney raised the issue that he understands it's a legal issue too. But the question I don't understand is why the shift to say the person trying to create the subdivision, who may have that burden of proof for the title and interest through a court, no longer has to do that. It's now the problem of the abutters to pursue legal action. That's a problem and I don't think that's appropriate. And I think that's a little bit of a shifting of the problem here. So, again, sympathetic with Mr. Yates. Looks like his subdivision is gonna meet the expectations and it looks like it's well thought out and designed. But property interest is paramount to people here in this town. And I think that has to get resolved on good conscience before this can move forward for his benefit as well as the abutters. And it shouldn't be as simple as shifting the person that's trying to create the subdivision, those costs, to the abutters through a court action. I don't think that's appropriate. Thank you.
I could just briefly address that. I, you know, our preference is certainly not litigation. I realize anytime an attorney gets up here and talks about court, that that's, that it can be heard that way. We just would rather focus on what we think the legal standard is. And, you know, this board has a lot of power in this situation. And what I think right title interest is supposed to do is to not allow someone that has an objection, that doesn't want something, doesn't want a development to make that objection or make the town exercise its regulatory authority to advance what are private interests. And if they've, if there's a disagreement about where the boundary line is on a survey, what the property rights are based on the deeds, the town shouldn't be playing referee between the neighbors. And the burden should be on the person that says that exceeds my rights. As to the easements that were open-ended, I think everyone understands, or at least I thought everyone understood, what the road is to be improved, what its width is, where it's located, the plans. I think there's been transparency around that. I wasn't involved in preparing the easement, but it was never intended to try to exceed what was, what is proposed as a reasonable access road. Was never intended to go further than would be necessary to meet the town's standards. So, I think that's, just wanted to respond to that briefly.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing on this section?
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second it.
Second to close the public hearing. Discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? Ananimos. All right, the motion at hand.
Are we discussing the motion now up here? Well, I have to say, I completely agree with Mr. Cutler that there's clearly miscommunication between what Yates thinks, or the attorney thinks, has been communicated to the abutters and what they perceive to understand. And we heard some of these same comments a year ago. We heard the comment a year ago about the opening or the first part of Cram Road, about the safety issue, about not being able to get vehicles down, down that road, safety vehicles. And I am adamantly opposed to shifting the burden to citizens to have to sue. I'm adamantly opposed to that. You know, it's easy for the town to say, "Oh, well, you just, you know, you can just sue if you don't like it." That's, I don't agree with that at all. Your property is, is like your main, for most people, it's their main investment. And I think it would be highly irresponsible for the board to just say, "Well, too bad, so sad." And I don't support that at all, especially when our attorney says otherwise to us.
Scott, do you know if the discontinuance paper, discussion, whatever the council voted on or selectmen voted on when this was discontinued? Has anybody even seen that, see if any public easements were retained?
No public easements were retained.
So, it discontinued with no reservations?
Yeah, it was just, I can pull up a picture of the report, but you're not gonna be able to read it.
I love it.
But...
That's what it says, huh?
This is the actual paper.
1929, March 4th, town select board meeting. They voted to discontinue the road from approximately, from the house that was previously mentioned here, the old farmstead where the pavement ends, to some amount of distance off of the other end, which, to get to our other public comment, the previous litigation over the other end was not over the discontinued portion of the road. It was over the non-discontinued portion of the road, which was then abandoned by the town. And what abandoned meant versus the discontinuance. So that was the issue over there.
So this portion on the other side isn't abandoned, it's just discontinued?
The portions between the farmstead and, I think it's described in this language as the chic place is, was discontinued. A portion on either end was retained. The portion that we're talking about here that is still a public road, the portion at the other end was abandoned at some point in the intervening hundred years.
Either by vote or by just plain abandonment?
I believe the abandonment was by abandonment and that's why there was a legal issue over it at the last, the last time this was litigated. But again, different portion with different legal issues because of abandonment versus discontinuance.
I'll add one more thing. I also have a hard time swallowing the fact that people were given blank pieces of paper to sign as the easement.
We haven't seen them.
We haven't seen it, well... Yeah, I'd like to see a copy. But regardless, there's a lack of communication all the way around. And I don't know if the planning department can facilitate some of that conversation so everybody's clear about what the plan is, where the road would lie. And there's some benefits for having a public road there. And if that's clearly communicated with some of the advantages of having that road there, then I see that there, you know, you can, when you get together, you can always work a way forward. But if you're working in isolation, you know, you don't help yourself out.
It's not our job to sell the project to the abutters.
No, but to help them understand, or if they, I mean, I'm just trying to find a way forward.
Yep.
But also, sorry, the planning board's not, is responsibility, Carolyn. We're not responsible for deciding the road issues or things like that. If Mr. Yates has the right to build a subdivision on his 70 acres of land...
On his land?
Yeah, but my point is that like you're getting into issues where like, all I'm talking about is that he has a right on his, his land.
Yes, he does.
Okay, I'm not going into the subdivision project. I'm talking about one issue at a time here. And if you get into the weeds here, the town council is responsible for the road. In the cases that the abutters might have an issue, but if I own 70 acres of land and, you know, and I wanted to build something on my land, you're trying to mitigate everybody and get everyone together, but that's not the planning board's desire, you know, that's not our design. You were trying to get everyone kumbaya on this and in some days, we're never gonna be able to get everyone happy. But our issue is also the fact of Mr. Yates and everything else is, yes, in Section B, it talks about things. But the reality is, is that if we're getting into the cement, into the minor weeds of, let's see if everyone can be happy, that's also an issue with the fact of like, yeah, it's not the situation. Is that once he had Mr. Finney's easement, when people signed easements, if they decide not to look at the easements and they sign something blank, that's not on us to mitigate the fact of whether or not somebody signed something without actually reading it or understanding it. My also point is, as I said, we are only talking about one component of this. This is not the subdivision discussion, this is just the title discussion. It says if Mr. Yates owns 70 acres of land and wants to build a subdivision, does he have the title to it? And as I said, I think we're trying to find out whether or not like, you know, this is gonna, if we find 100, sorry, as we said when we were doing the site walk, I had fun with the fact that we're talking about a document that's literally 70 years old and things like this. I just think all we're doing is approving his right here, as the lawyer said. It says that in paragraph B, the possibility Yates could obtain these easements is a legally cognable expectation of having the power to use the site in the ways that he'd be authorized by permit. All we're saying is that he has a title and that he has gotten easements. We're not saying we're approving the subdivision, two different subjects.
My thoughts on it, as, and this is my thoughts, he has right title and interest to that portion of the property adjoining his property. Be it the further end of the project where he owns both sides of the road, or pathway on the right-hand side he owns the section. I'm not an attorney, but from what I've heard in the past, when there's a discontinuance of a road, fee ownership reverts back to the centerline of the road. And there's all kinds of dates involved. And I'm not, you know, I think it's pre-75 when they discontinued, there's no, unless they specifically reserved rights. And I could have the wrong date there, but there just aren't any. If you own private, if you're a private landowner, there's a private right, I think, for you to travel down there. Maybe by prescription, I don't know. But there's some rights to get to your property, I think. I'm not 100% positive.
Well, that's the thing, none of us are, except that our town attorney said...
How'd he get from point A to B? So I somewhat agree with what you're saying, I see what Todd's saying.
And I hear the people in the, in the audience that say, "You know, he can develop his land, great, but please don't develop my land." Which I totally respect that as well, 'cause I don't think that's okay to develop somebody else's property. And, and that's why we're back to this question. We all know that we can't make that decision, we don't have the legal expertise. So, the only thing I can do is rely on what our attorney provided us.
I was surprised that they didn't mention any of the other abutters in their response letter. That doesn't make much sense to them. Do other members of the board have some thoughts on this?
I just think, for all it's worth, that our town attorney shouldn't have given us three damn choices.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
First of all...
Yes.
So, we get the information we have and we make the best decision that we can with the information that we have. I would have preferred one choice, one legal choice, but I have three to choose from. So I am on the side, at this point, that Mr. Yates has the right to proceed. That's my, that's my view. But I would have preferred not to do one, two, or three. Just give us one legal direction.
Yes.
And I'd be happy, but that's not what we have. So, my take is to continue with the vote for option one. That's my...
Andrew, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think this application is a hot mess. And, yeah, I wish we weren't in this predicament of, I'm not a lawyer, we all aren't lawyers, we've already said that. And Frank was absolutely right. It would be nice if we had one direction from our town lawyer. And I have more questions for the town lawyer that we could go back and forth. I wish our town lawyer was here. That probably would have saved us a lot of time. But I think the, I think the property owners have a right to their, to their land, so...
You know, I'm still, I still believe that this, that there is sufficient right title or interest. You know, basing a lot of that on, that they've received permitting from the state and the federal government. You know, and I think it could be argued either way in a court. But from, you know, my non-attorney review of this, I'm comfortable with saying that they do have sufficient right title or interest.
As I read through the stuff, I thought item three was the best option. Where we find the application initially complete, but conditioning the preliminary approval on requirements that the applicant provide further evidence of right title interest prior to the granting the final approval. That was just my thoughts. Give them the opportunity to secure their easement deeds or whatever they need. Don't get final approval till we get such a document.
I have no problem. Mr. Chair, as I made the motion, if the second wants to, in a sense, make that adjustment, I have no problem going with three. I just feel that we need to move this thing forward.
I have no problem going through either.
All right. amended to go with item three. The board find the application initially complete and review the application, but conditioning any preliminary approval pursuant to subsection one. Section 181-78 on the requirement that the applicant provide further evidence of right title and interest prior to granting final approval. Final plan shall be submitted for approval of the planning board and for recording fulfillment requirements of these standards and conditions of preliminary approval. This may include, among other things, the easement interest referred to in Attorney Richard's letter to the board. That was the whole. Any further discussion on that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I would wonder if the applicant would move forward with that motion, because he talked about spending more money. Is he gonna spend more money if he can or can't prove what we're requesting?
Mr. Richards, go.
Mr. Chair, could I, our position is option number three is actually what you've been doing for the last year plus, which is waiting for something that may or may not happen and that I think is going beyond this board's oversight of discussions between private property owners. And I understand that, yeah, I understand where the board's coming from, but I think what we really do need is a decision on option one or two. And that really does turn upon, well, who, that is, ends up being aggrieved by that is gonna go pursue what next steps they might need to, or where does that leave us? So, I just think that option three is really just back to what we were doing before.
The other part I have about completeness is that the other five things that are missing, the conceptual, long-range development plan, the financial capacity, the cistern details of fire prevention, the HOA storm water maintenance plan for open space, the draft deed covenant for open space, those things are still missing from this. So I don't see how we can say it's complete to begin with. We were just trying to address the right title and interest because that seemed to be the pressing concern.
I believe some of those items for completeness are for final. And what the letter was saying, final would not be available, but preliminary could be at this time, 'cause those would need to be provided during the final. And for the long-range kind of conceptual, we had provided in our initial application that phase two with the connectivity to the neighboring lots for that. And then the other ones, I believe, are conditions of final. And we'd be asking for preliminary and then resubmit stuff for final at this point. So this wouldn't, we're just looking for preliminary at this point, just wanted to clarify.
All right. Any other thoughts? Not, we'll move to question. Not, we'll move the question.
So, Charlie, before you do, can we clarify which question we're moving at this point? Just because there's been a lot of back and forth.
Item three under planning options from our attorney.
Jensen and Barrett, page four, bottom three.
So, I'm just making sure we are in fact going with the, the third option that continues this discussion at a later date.
I mean, to me, we've always looked at right title and interest, not only in the lot itself, but access to the lot. If you don't have the right to provide the 20 people with a way to get to their property, it seems to me that it's not the right thing for us to be doing. Just my.
Yeah, I mean, I think, forgive me to all the lawyers involved here who I'm going to try and paraphrase, but I think part of why our town attorney gave us three options is because, as was previously stated here tonight by the applicant's attorney, this is such a complicated issue that there is no way to resolve it fully at this stage. And what the applicant is requesting us at this moment is to make a decision one way or the other so that this can be brought to a more appropriate venue. If, if that's adequate. And my, I fully would normally agree with this type of approach, to do a preliminary, a conditioned preliminary, to give them the time so that all the wheels can keep turning. But this has been lasted for a long time, those wheels have been turning, and I think we're at the point where this is the major issue remaining. And leaving it up in the air means that we're just going to come back to this in a couple months to have this same discussion again. And I, if that's what the board wants to do, that is absolutely one of the options laid out, and you're absolutely willing, able to do that, and I don't, it's not a terrible option, but I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with what that means.
One more comment, Charlie?
Yeah.
Then I won't say anything anymore. I would rather have the applicant through the town to get the answer than to have to have landowners sue for their property rights. I don't think that's a fair burden to put on property owners. So that's why I come down with option one.
Option one isn't the one we're talking.
I know, we're talking about option three. I get it, Todd.
Aren't we talking the same thing, option three? The applicant must provide further evidence of right title and interest.
They're telling us they don't want that.
I know.
And the other problem, if I can just interrupt, I'm sorry, I just, the problem with that is that it doesn't create a final decision, so if we wanted to go to court and deal with it there, we would still be in a holding pattern with the subdivision application pending that wouldn't allow us to have one single proceeding if there was an appeal by, and a butter of, of the right title and interest, and then any other subdivision standards that they might allege are not met by the application.
I don't have a response to that. Okay. Vote, vote on this motion.
Yeah, voting on number three first.
All those in favor? Two. All those opposed? Four. Motion fails.
Does the chair want me to make the motion again on number one, see how that goes? Okay. I'm only making relation to, to the right title and interest, okay? Nothing to do with the subdivision application. I'm just saying, the board, that the release deed to Yates is sufficient, making an affirmative finding of right title and interest, and then allow us to proceed with the subdivision review. As I said, the subdivision review is a completely separate entity, meaning there's a completely different can of worms there, okay?
Is there a second?
Second?
Moved and seconded. Item number one. It's the same one Carolyn hit, right?
No, I had two. I had two so that, to protect the property rights of the citizens versus, so that they, citizens wouldn't have to incur legal expenses for this project to go through when it's totally out of their hands. So basically with this option, we're saddling people with, I have to legal bill, which I don't think is, is appropriate.
Other thoughts?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Patrick Gilsett?
All those in favor of option one? Four.
Opposed?
Two.
So, is there now a motion to table this until they respond to the engineering questions and?
Sorry, I would, as I said, I was splitting the two, two things in, in half here. I think the, the subdivision application, as Ms. Beagle says, there are issues that are, that haven't been resolved to my satisfaction. I don't know about the rest of the planning board, but I'd like to see some of that information provided. But now that we've provided them an answer on one, at least that part is done. So I would say we table the motion, you know, table the subdivision application until information is provided to sufficiently allow us to move this forward.
As long as we can spell out exactly what we need.
Yeah, I think Ms. Beagle actually kind of read out some of the, the key things that were missing.
Well, I have smaller concerns that didn't talk about. I just do, I'm sorry. For the lots that are right along the road, so right behind them, in the building envelope, the rest of it is all supposed to be deeded, protected, wetland. And it's very difficult for that to stay deeded and protected without some kind of obvious marker, like a wall or rocks or something, so that over time, that doesn't all of a sudden, you know, get mowed as, to add on to somebody's backyard. That was just one thing. Another thing was that paved five-foot right-of-way with no curb, I'm opposed to that, I think we really need to have a curb there. That's a, a road.
Sidewalk?
A sidewalk, yeah, I think we need a sidewalk there, especially.
Protected areas, item six under the latest Goral and Palmer, they're recommending putting iron pins.
Yeah.
Butter caps on it, so we know where the delineation of those protected areas are.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't really think that's enough. I know other towns require a more visible kind of marker, so that, you know, if somebody sells their property, you know, it's an, if you have something that's obviously there, it doesn't, over time, just get buried like a pin. Because they are supposed to be protected wetlands, and I think there has to be more of a definitive marking.
What does our ordinance say, as far as what's required?
I mean, those are largely to meet DEP requirements.
This is typical DEP right here. We've done that on two or three other subdivisions in town.
DEP requires them to, to be marked out and pinned. And then there's even options of like small signage that could be there, that.
Signage, something.
Yeah, there, there's like, there's placards, or like that, that you could put around on the properties so they know. That way, it's additional to the pins, something like that. And then to address the, the sidewalk along Yates Road, we had discussed that in previous meetings with the board, we've gone back and forth with that. And that is what the general consensus was, to provide some sort of safe access there with the five-foot strip. So that's why it's there on the plans, as it is today.
Well, I think we, I remember that conversation, and I think what we also talked about was having people coming down that hill, being distracted drivers, with people texting and other things, and we wanted to have a curb. So I was kind of surprised not to see a curb on the plan. I know we went back and forth on that, but I think the final result, I'd have to go back, but I'm pretty sure we talked about a curb.
I have to go back. I will, I, I remember a difference, I'll have to go back and check too, I remember with the pavement and the painting striping, that's, that's why it's on there, but.
That's just on Yates Way?
Yes. And at this point, we were, we were just hoping for preliminary, which I know there's the items that Scott had listed out for final that would need to be addressed, but I believe if the board's okay with the, the long-term plan, we, we meet everything for preliminary to be brought up. If I'm wrong, so I believe that's what your, your items were for final.
Yeah, I, I mean, as long as the board is willing to accept the build-out of phase two as part of the, as the connection plan, then all the other submission items needed for preliminary, I believe, are there.
One of the guys on this on phase two, in the plan that we had looked at, it only provides continued access to one adjacent parcel.
Right, which I, I have a problem with that. One, one thing that's happening in town, in Standish, is that you have a lot of elderly property owners that have big swaths of land.
Sure.
And as land changes hands, there's going to be more development in town. And so when you only have one option of it going lateral instead of back, that's, we're trying to create connectivity, and behind the property, far enough behind it, is Bonny Eagle Road, it would be nice to eventually have some kind of connection to Bonny Eagle Road, but we don't have anything going back. So, we haven't had a chance to really talk about phase two, but I, I think to just assume that the connectivity plan should only be addressed at phase two is not what's called for in the ordinance. It's supposed to be a plan for the phase that we approve.
Well, the intent was that there was, is the, you know, it's a long-term build-out of, of the property. And we could, we could have shown some additional, possibly, if, if this had been brought up sooner for preliminary, for that, at that portion, because we've been understanding we had that included in there, that that was sufficient up until this point, because I don't remember having those discussions about additional right-of-ways off of that proposed phase two.
Well, we didn't really discuss it a lot.
Yeah.
It was just, we're going to move forward to phase two later on.
Right.
It was an attempt to have a connectivity plan, I believe.
Yes, it was.
At least that was what I thought was, you can't go, you're not so.
So, just to, to be clear, the, what I've talked about in my memo as the conceptual long-range development plan is a requirement for conservation subdivisions. It's separate from connectivity to separate parcels. It's a conceptual long-range development plan showing potential utilization of the lots and the balance of the parcel. So, it's more of a, how is this working with neighboring lands in that way, and with the balance of the remaining land? So, again, I think there are absolutely concerns, and this has been in the memo from day one. Is the board willing to accept this for preliminary or not? But I think it's more than just the connection, the connections to other lots, it's about whether this fits in as a conservation subdivision.
Okay. Understand? Everybody good with that?
I'm good with that.
Given preliminary, we'd have to vote on, um, complete for preliminary review.
Right.
And then a vote on the actual preliminary subdivision.
Right.
We've got a lot of information. We can move to notifications between preliminary and final.
I mean, I think that any, to my mind, which is not the decision-maker here, you have what you need for them to move forward, that we have some elements that we need addressed before final can be done. Most of them are typical things addressed in final that we wouldn't necessarily even have at this point. The items that may be of concern are mostly responses to engineering review, and the fire cistern was one, but they have addressed that tonight. So I think at that point, from, from my perspective, it's certainly open to the board to make that decision.
Again, and the, the items that Scott had listed out would, would be addressed in our, in our final application.
I'll make the motion. I move to find the application submitted by Teradyne Consultants on behalf of Gates Builders for subdivision on the property at map six, lot 45 and 32A1, complete for preliminary review.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Todd. Discussion by the board.
None.
None. Enter. May none, all those in favor? Two, three, four. Opposed? Two. Okay. Do we have to list everything? Should we list everything? I mean, we've got the 20 items from Goral and Palmer. We've got those items that Carolyn brought, I think we can add to that list. A lot of it is all us, specific stuff that we need for the final plan.
Can't you send that to them, Scott, in an email?
Yeah, I mean, they have everything.
We don't need to go over it.
The only thing they didn't have in writing ahead of the meeting tonight was Carolyn's comments, which are now recorded. It's up to the board how much detail you want to go into. I think there's an understanding that there is items that need to be addressed, including those engineering points, including the items that Carolyn brought up, that are, are still there to be finished. I think we all understand that this is a, a project still under review, but that we have a preliminary element done, if that's what the board is comfortable with.
Just a question, Scott.
I think they've met the criteria for preliminary, myself.
I would agree with that.
I'm not sure if I understood this correctly, but with the impact fee that they pay, that's what's going to bring the rest of Cram Road up to standard?
If Public Works feels that there are off-site improvements needed to address to, to serve this development, which would be improvements to Cram Road, the public portion would fall into that, then yeah, we settle that. Generally, there's, usually that's just a, like, percentage of a paving project, depending on how far out we are, or some, or small items like that, so it is not a huge engineering project to determine what that is. And we do, and we have generally, that is part of something, it's not part of the initial requirements for submission, so we've handled it in final, at that time, with the capital, with the performance guarantees, when we have all the construction elements labeled and numbered.
So will we know by the next meeting just what that would involve?
Certainly by the next time you see this, if they're looking to get final approval, we will have that all on paper and hard copy, yes. We would not be able to get a final approval without that.
Great, thank you.
Does the council have to approve that number?
I mean, usually it is a percentage of existing project. Again, this is not, this is somewhat unique in that this, a road serving this many units, is serving a larger number of units being proposed, and what that means, and what that's going to be required to do, I'm going to have to talk to the Public Works Director on exactly how that even works.
We looked at one not too long ago, where the Public Works Director felt that the road needed to be widened and so on and so forth.
I mean, we did that, that was sketch plan review, that we, the board hasn't ruled on that, the town hasn't ruled on that, we don't have a number on that. I mean, usually it's, I mean, what we did, the one most recently we did would have been Woodbury Heights on Northeast Road here, and they went through Public Works, there was a certain amount of the, the intersection project that was able to factor into that through the equation in the, in the book, and some work on Northeast Road that went into that calculation.
Offsite improvements.
Yeah.
Would that be a, those improved? Final approval must be granted prior to the sale of lots and issuance of any permits. This approval is independent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed by the applicant either orally or in writing. And any variation from the plans, proposal, or supporting document must be reviewed by the planning board as part of the final approval. The following conditions shall be included in the final approval unless removed by the board at the time of the approval. Number of lots in this subdivision may not be further subdivided. Property markers in compliance with section one eighty-one dash eighty-four A eight must be installed prior to the sale of the lots. The stormwater buffer on lots one, two, four, five, six, and nine must be marked with physical monumentation prior to the issuance of the building permits. Prior to the issuance of a building permit for the lots, the CEO must confirm that all structures and clearing will be outside of the buffers. Lot three has a modified building envelope to avoid disturbance of the historic house foundation. Prior to the issuance of the building permit of this lot, the CEO must confirm that all structures will be inside the building envelope shown on this plan. All evidence within the subdivision must be served by sprinkled system. All residents, excuse me. I'll learn how to read in a minute. Meeting the requirements of the town's Standish ordinance, chapter one eighty-two, fire prevention, unless they are within two thousand feet, is measured along a road or fire lane or a source of fire protection water supply as specified in chapter one forty-two, article two, water supplies, and approved by the fire chief. I think that is it.
One question about that, Charlie.
Yeah?
So there's that one lot that is not, can't, has to amend the building envelope because of the foundation.
Yeah.
Is that because of the, some historical group said that that had to happen?
I can answer that. We, as part of our submission to Main Historic, they identified that location as a site of a previous foundation. I went out, we investigated it, and then we amended the building plan, sent it back to Main Historic, and got their approval from, from that, and that was included in one of our responses.
Yeah.
To, to keep it out of billable area and preserve it.
Yeah, so was that initiated by them or by, I mean, to me, there's so many old foundations, I was surprised that, just because it is a foundation, that that had to be factored in.
Yeah, so it was, it was, I forget how long it was dated back to, but we submit the request for their records to see if they had any records of any historic ones that came back on them. And then I went out and I walked everything again to make sure we saw it, and I, it was something, when I walked down the Cram Road, you can't see it when you're walking down Cram Road.
It's up on the hill.
It's up on the hill, and it's, there's no structure above, so I went up and I, we marked the location of it, and then we put the perimeter around it for them. So it's good, that'll be preserved as part of that forever.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's great, but, I mean, my concern was, does that really need to happen?
For, for Main Historic, they wanted, yeah.
All right, that's the question.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry.
State level. I think this is the first time we've ever seen that. I don't recall anyway seeing it before.
First for everything.
That's right. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? Four opposed, two. All right, charge ahead.
One thing down.
Mr. Bishop. Man, look at this lovely pen I brought with me.
Is it all you do is sign with that pen?
Yes, only your documents.
Special pens.
It is nine-nine. Wow. All right. Let me just get my stuff together here.
That's why I handed it.
Mr. Bishop.
That's why I take the chips game.
We're on a roll, Charlie.
What's that?
We're on a roll.
On a roll.
Don't jinx us, don't jinx us.
This is all Yates. Yates, Yates.
All right, next.
More Yates. All right. New business, Peter Bishop, thirty-one Bonny Eagle Pond Road. Application to have a nineteen-by-nineteen cement poured to build a garage. Just prior to the meeting, we did have a site walk out there.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm speaking for Pete Bishop. I'm the excavation contractor that's going to be doing his site work.
Your name, sir?
Andrew Barker.
Andrew Barker, very good.
I've known Pete for quite a few years. He purchased property in 2019. Upon then, it was all surveyed, and to the best of my knowledge, there wasn't an existing dwelling there at one time. Wants his garage. And on that, he wants just a simple nineteen-by-nineteen onsite slab-on-grade. Now, he also had proposed a wooden, wooden foundation and wooden, obviously wooden frame garage, and that JP approved either of the structures. Obviously, state of Maine with frost and everything else, I'd rather see concrete going. I will not be doing the building framing or concrete. Concrete will be either David Larrabee or another concrete contractor. I'm just doing the site work, but everything starts with site work. Obviously zoning, property lines and everything else are obviously tonight a huge issue. So with every project, you've got to make sure you're not over in any way, shape, or form, and it matches every setback. So with that being said, I was told also before the meeting, you, there was a few people, well, a few members, I should say, of the council that showed up at his property, and I guess what was your understanding of the property?
What our real standing was?
Yeah.
I mean.
Went and saw it.
Mr. Bishop just showed us the, the old pad where the crushed stone was.
Yep.
Where the historic building had been.
Yep.
And indicated that he was going to put a nineteen-by-nineteen foot garage on that spot.
Yep.
With the access going out onto his driveway where the septic system is.
Yes, that's a newly chambered septic that's on there as well. So concrete chambers is what it is, so it can be driven on.
H-twenty loading. Did I miss anything?
I don't know.
They're going to be busy digging out a big stone.
I got quite a few pieces of equipment, so I can take care of that pretty easily. But obviously, it's not a full frost wall foundation. It's just going to be slab-on-grade with a twelve-inch by twelve-inch haunch, or twelve by six, whatever he prefers to go with. It is under the six hundred-foot threshold, so it doesn't really pertain to frost protection, so he can really kind of more or less build what he wants. But I would definitely advise at least a haunch around it. He doesn't have to do insulation board or anything else, because it's below the six hundred square foot parameter.
You want a motion, Mr. Chair, to the, to fit their termination of complete list?
You've got a chance to have his response first. He has anything?
I mean, I think we largely covered it. The only, I had put in two conditions above the boiler plates of timelines and things like that. One was that you get an erosion control plan approved.
Oh, absolutely.
With CEO prior to permits.
Yeah, you can look me up, I'm fully D P certified as well, so I'm.
Just, there's just, we didn't have one on, in the application, so we'll get it approved by the CEO before any work starts.
Absolutely.
And similarly, just to make sure that if any trees were coming down, because we weren't sure before we went out to the site, it doesn't look, it looks like they've already all been down. I believe the CEO already permitted them, but.
Yep.
If any trees come down, the CEO needs to approve a replanting plan.
Yeah, I can get with JP and give him a whole erosion protection plan for that. There's no big deal. Whatever he would like, I probably would just use the silt socks all around and obviously any, there's not going to be a lot of moving soil, because it's all crushed stone. It's going to be for the pad end. It's going to be really.
Once you dig that tree out, there'll be a little bit.
A little bit, but not, I mean, we're not.
I mean, I, you know, you're certified, JP knows what he's doing.
Yeah.
You get that approved by him, is this, this condition.
Yep. I'm trying to ruffle any feathers tonight, just trying to get the job done, that's it.
I did run some calculations. The original historic building garage was four hundred and thirty-two square feet. The new one is three hundred and sixty-one, so we have seventy-one square feet less of building.
Will you go for the full amount?
He proposed nineteen-foot squares. That's what we're reviewing.
I mean, we could go, I mean, we're right here.
Mr. Barker, stick to what you got on the paper.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking to decrease the impervious layer on.
Yeah, okay.
So you've, you've made an attempt to do that, I think. We did discuss that the areas outside the garage would be loamed and seeded.
Yes, well, the, so the difference is with that is one side is driveway.
That won't be, but the side towards the road, the back.
Oh, yes.
Between the garage and the.
Loam-seeded, mulch, yeah.
Utility building.
Yeah, well.
Be loamed and seeded.
Depending on which way his eaves go as well, I don't know for a plan. I actually know they go that way, so it, it just will have a little bit of perimeter stone to help with erosion, drip-edge stone around for your eaves, and then after that will be loam and seed, yes.
If, if the planning provided us, the water's going to go to the driveway and off the backside.
Yes, yep. So then it's going to go the driveway and the backside is going to be a drip-edge stone, because it's going to collect the water, so it doesn't erode, so.
We want to decrease that impervious surface.
Yes.
Is it going to be a metal roof?
I don't know yet. I'm not.
I was just thinking of the, the snow coming off right in front of the.
Looks like it, doesn't it?
Yeah, he's, so he, I.
It's going to come off really fast, too, with that slope.
He's not going to be here all winter, it's just a summer, spring, summer, fall estate, so, I mean, I don't know what's going to happen in the winter, but hopefully don't take out the door.
This person in the drawing is going to be there.
Someone will be there, it won't be me.
Up in the attic. He has a short-sleeve shirt on, Andrew, so he's definitely not here during the.
And code enforcement is okay with building being writ where the other one was?
Yeah, we, he submitted a letter to you via your packet stating that the plans shown reflect the building that was there.
Eighteen-by-twenty-four building was damaged and falling down. Reason to remove it in the spring.
And the building size and why, part of why it's smaller is the allowances for a total footprint within a hundred feet of the water. He's coming, bumping right up at the top of that, so that's why it had to be narrowed up a little bit.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
And then a hundred and fifteen feet to the water line from the property lines, bringing that back. Still going to have a little bit of, in the hundred, between seventy-five. Almost a full bag.
I mean, the, the building's twelve feet off the property line, so it's only got two feet outside the a hundred.
Okay. Board members, discussion, and we'll open it up to the public.
I think you've covered it.
Well said.
All right. Open it up to the public. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Seeing none, I guess we can move forward. If you'd like to.
All right. Move the board grant approval under the provision of the Standish Land Use Code.
We're going to do completeness.
Oh, sorry, sorry, we got ahead of ourselves. Okay, let's do completeness. I move to find the application for reconstruction of illegally non-conforming garage at thirty-one Bonny Eagle Pond Road to be complete.
Seconded. Discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you.
You're going to have a motion yet.
One more.
It's just that you've got a complete application.
Step one, now we have to do step two.
All right.
Okay. Want me to read the second motion?
Sure.
All right. Move that the board grant approval under the provision of the Standish Land Use Code for the application submitted by Peter Bishop for the removal and replacement of illegally non-conforming garage at thirty-one Bonny Eagle Pond Road in Standish, having found the application to meet the requirements of two thirty-seven dash twelve, two thirty-seven dash fifteen, and two thirty-seven dash sixteen, and all other applicable sections of the Standish Code of Ordinance with the following conditions. You want me to read all six? I can.
Did Don Nichols actually provide those? I don't think that's.
Oh, sorry, yeah, Peter Bishop.
So the six conditions are, you want me to read them? Mr. Chair, you want me to read all six conditions?
I think we should, just to get it on the record.
Not a problem. All work shall be in conformance with materials and plans submitted by Don Nichols, which consists.
Peter Bishop, sorry.
Peter Bishop, sorry. Peter Bishop, which consists of site plans, building evaluate, elevations, and supporting application materials. This approval shall lapse and become void in one year as laid out in two thirty-seven dash sixteen F. The CEO will approve an erosion control plan prior to issuance of any building permit. The CEO will approve a replanting plan for any protected trees removed as, as part of this project prior to the issuance of a building permit per standards found in two thirty-seven dash twelve C one B. The planning board approval of this site plan is limited to the structure setbacks to the maximum practical extent. The proposed plan represents a, a retention of the existing non-conformities. Number six, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed by the applicant or the applicant's agent either orally or in writing, and that any variation from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve.
Seconded.
I'll second it.
Seconded, grant approval with conditions. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? unanimous. Now you have the approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop's day.
Perfect, thank you.
Ah, he's here.
Yeah, I thought so, I thought he was on the back.
Okay, item two on new business, Jack Carney, the board. Did I get that right?
Jim.
Back again.
Good evening, board. Jim Yates with Yates Builders, not the Jim Yates that was just here, by the way. That was a different person. This is looking for approval on a tear-down and replacement on four Rocky Ridge Avenue down in Standish off Main. We did a site, site walk last week. I think you guys all got to look at the property and just requesting approval on the application to start this.
I have a question, Charlie.
Okay.
Where did we end up with slight movement of the new place X number of feet?
We did. So I, I did go down and measure that with my excavation crew. I think it's easy for us to get that. Right now, it's six feet from the property line, the sideline. We're going to be able to get it at a minimum of twelve. We're going to shoot for even the fifteen, but I know we can get twelve without any problem.
That's all I wanted to know. Thank you very much.
I looked at it, it looked like.
The CEO will approve a replanting plan for any protected trees removed as, as part of this project prior to the issuance of a building permit per standards found in 237-12C, 1B. The planning board approval of this site plan is limited to the structure setbacks to the maximum practical extent. The proposed plan represents a, a retention of the existing non-conformities. Number six, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed by the applicant or the applicant's agent either orally or in writing, and that any variation from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve.
Do a second.
I'll second it.
We've been seconded, grant approval with conditions. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Ananmas. Now you have the approval.
Thank you.
We'll make Mr. Bishop's day.
Perfect, thank you.
Ah, he's here.
Yeah, I thought so, I thought he was on the back.
Okay, item two on new business, Jack Kearney, the board, can I get that right?
Jim.
Back again.
Jim Yates with Yates Builders, not the Jim Yates that was just here, by the way. That was a different person. This is, looking for approval on a tear down and replacement on 4 Rocky Ridge Avenue down in Standish Off Main. We did a sidewalk, sidewalk last week. I think you guys all got to look at the property and just requesting approval on the application to start this.
I have a question, Charlie.
Okay.
Where did we end up with slight movement of the new place X number of feet?
We did. So I, I did go down and measure that with my excavation crew. I think it's easy for us to get that, it, right now it's six feet from the property line, the sideline. We're going to be able to get it at a minimum of 12. We're going to shoot for even the 15, but I know we can get 12 without any problem.
That's all I wanted to know, thank you very much.
I looked at it, it looks like if you shift it over to where the existing built no bulkhead is, you've just about got it.
It's going to be a little more than that, yep, but close. And it is, the, the lot is a little bit of an angle, so it might be 12 to 15 feet at one point, and it might be 12 for 13 at another. There is a little bit of a taper to that lot, so, but we're going to try to get it as, as pushed as far as we can.
Sounds good.
It's not going to be a problem.
Scott, did you want to add anything? We kind of jumped on you.
The main things in the memo are that we, again, need an erosion control plan approved by the CEO and a replanting plan for significant trees. We went on the sidewalk, it definitely looked like there's at least one tree coming down that's going to need a replanting plan.
Correct, there's the one, the one big oak coming down, some shrubs in the front are all going to be removed, but replanting is going to be more than what we take down on that. We'll set that plan with the CEO. And the erosion control plan is going to be facilitated with a double, a double row of erosion control, an erosion mulch and a silt fence, and is done by a DDP certified excavation crew, so...
Yeah, we'll just need that okayed by the CEO.
Yeah, and I assume that goes in, that's always part of my application to the CEO.
Yeah, I'm...
Yep.
And then I think the, the remaining question is just, there is a little, in talking about where the, the new footprint is going to be, you're moving it in a little bit, it would be nice if we, I think the board should ask for that on paper, so that-
I have a number seven.
And we're also pulling the house back a considerable amount from the water. We know that, that's our plans now, and we're going to bring that as far as we can without getting the septic into the driveway and keep it...
And the impervious- Eight or 10 feet from the septic tank to the foundation anyways.
Correct, eight feet, and then we need to be a certain ways off from the property line, and we're going to try to keep it out of the driveway if we can't, we'll go in the driveway, but it'll just be a new tank.
Carolyn?
After we went on the sidewalk, I took Scott's advice and opened up the code book to look at nonconformity. And what's missing in our packet, we have 237B, but we don't have 237C to A, which says that a nonconforming structure may be relocated, provided that the side of the relocation confirms to all setback requirements to the greatest practical extent. So if, if there was no house on that lot, somebody else bought it, they would have to meet that side setback of 15 feet.
But then it wouldn't be nonconforming, because we don't have some of it.
Well, that's the whole thing, is our job is to try to follow this and to make it as nonconfor-
As conforming as possible.
And so I think, I think that it's not like a preference, I think it really has to be, if the side setback is 15, and on that lot, some lots you can't meet the setbacks because they're so cramped, but on this lot, you can.
What happens is they get closer to the 15, the building also gets closer to the front setback.
Yeah.
So we lose it on the front by making the side 15.
And the ordinance also talks about erosion control and runoff is a big thing around the lake, too. We just don't want to have a real heavy runoff between two roof pitches, just all hammering towards the lake.
Yeah, I'm, I think having 10 feet between the house and the garage is not going to add added runoff. I just think that in order for the board to be consistent with applicant after applicant after applicant, then we have to do the best we can to follow all setback requirements. And it might not mean, it might mean that that new structure has to be maybe a foot smaller, so you can meet that setback, but I think it is a brand new building that's being proposed, and it says that we're following, that we're supposed to try to conform to all setback requirements, including the side setback. So I, I-
I'm arguing with you, I'm just saying that if they do that, then they're going to be sort of 36 feet off the front, they're going to be about 31. Still outside of the 25 feet.
I, I think there's-
Because if you hold the back, you put the septic tank in there, and then you go eight feet, and that becomes the back of a house, you go 44 feet towards the front, and then you're 42, you slide it over, so you get your 15 feet on the side. That front, on the water, then goes from 36 to about 31 feet. I cut out a little square and I put it on here and moved it around so I could see how that all fit.
Well, except, I understand what you're, what you're saying, Charlie.
There's still decreasing the front, I just-
Yeah, no, I, I get that. Where I get stuck is that there, this is a beautiful piece of property.
Yes.
And you, you know, it's nice to be able to put a brand new structure on that, on that beautiful piece of property, and I'm all for that, but I think the beautiful new property that's on that lot should fit the setbacks, and if this design needs to be modified some to make the setbacks, then it has to be modified some, just like if somebody else bought that piece of property, we wouldn't say, well, you prefer to be 12 feet versus 15 feet, so you're, because you prefer that, we're going to say, okay.
So the, what, what I hear from you is if I made the house narrower and got it 15 feet from the property line, but I made it longer and got it closer to the water, but I still didn't go further than it was before, that would be okay with you?
I don't think you can go closer to the water. What I'm saying, you know, what I'm saying-
You don't have to, though. He can hit the 15 foot side setback.
Well, that's what I'd like to do.
He can move it over, it'll be like you say, about 10 feet off the garage.
Yep.
But the way he had it initially sketched on his plan, although it's magic marker marks, about 36 feet-
Scale.
It would move to 31 by sliding that over. Still, less, less distance on the front, and then you meet your side setback. But he can do it. It just narrows that distance between the face of the building and the garage to about 10 feet.
There may be some challenges maintaining the, the new building with 10 feet between two structures, so it's something I'm just a little concerned about, and, you know, to your point, it should be meeting the setbacks, they were just to say to the greatest extent practical, you know, so we want to make it less nonconforming, but in a way that they can still, you know, use the, their property the, the way they want. I, I don't love encroaching further to the, to the garage, to a point where it might be impossible to maintain this new building.
This, I, I get all that, but when you propose to build a, a brand new building, you get to figure out what the dimensions are going to be, and I didn't set that on your property. So if you try to take the same square and, and ha, put it on a piece of property, you might be hampered, but what he's doing is they're saying, we're going to put a brand new building on that property, I think you start with your setbacks, and you go from there to figure out the architectural layout of your brand new building, just like anybody else would have to do if they had that property. I'm just saying that it's a slippery slope to say, well, if you prefer to have 12 feet instead of 15 feet, okay, because then when the next people come and want to have a 12 foot side setback, we say, well, you can't, because the ordinance says 15. This is like a brand new structure.
But doesn't the ordinance allow some flexibility from the board because it's a nonconforming lot to begin with?
That's what Patrick was saying, it's like page three, the greatest practical extent, sorry, I'm paraphrasing, it's, what's in the memorandum is the greatest practical extent.
So there, the, the, there's some judgment there, those words give us some judgment on what to do, and he's already brought it back 10 feet, he's already brought it about 12 feet.
So-
I think that personally, I think that is reasonable.
So the ordinance also describes what makes a practical exception, and none of the reasons provided to us go into that practical exception. They're right in the ordinance. I mean, I was like thinking, okay, that would be fine to do, but I think as an entity, we have to be careful not to just say, oh, that's a preference that you have, and so we're going to do it, but the, the, I wish I had my reading glasses, but it defines what the greatest practical extent is. So it says a board should consider the size of the lot, that's not an issue, the slope of the land, that's not an issue, potential for soil erosion, that's not an issue, location of other structures on the property or on a, or on adjacent properties, that's not an issue, or the location of the septic system. So that's not an issue, so-
Carolyn?
We don't have those concerns-
Carolyn?
-with this particular lot.
Excuse me, you, you just said no to all those conditions. Are you an engineer, are you a builder?
Which one of those conditions do you think applies to your lot?
Erosion control.
Because of the two houses next to each other?
Septic system, yes, I do, and I've been building houses a long time, and I know what you need around houses and property, the, the lots on, down on the shore are all very small, their, their usage is huge, as we know, 87% land usage on that lot, which was huge, which I'm bringing down to 80, which is 1,100 square feet of more pervious land. I came into this giving, we talked down at the lot, you said, hey, if you can get me 12, I'm happy.
I did not read this. I took Scott's advice to read the code.
Technically, I, by, by what I know in the past, I don't have to move it off that property line, but I'm trying to conform with the town to make everything easier and better. We're pulling it back just as far as we can. That's not easy, that costs money. We're relocating the septic to do that. We're moving it off that property line as much as I can, so I don't have a problem that I believe we will have with maintaining and splash up and water coming off two major structures 10 feet apart. That's my professional opinion, I am a professional. I can say that.
There was the, sorry, the code was in the memorandum, so, but my point is, I think we're going to continue, I would like to move this thing forward to, you know, since the draft of completeness and move on to, move this thing at least to the next stage.
I would agree.
I agree.
We're not going to be, oh, sorry, we're, sorry, Mr. Yates, we don't, we're never going to be 100% on probably many things, so... So, Mr. Chair, I make a motion, I move to the, to find the application for reconstruction of illegally nonconforming house at 4 Rocky Shores to be complete.
I'll second that.
Get the right piece of paper, yeah.
That's okay.
It's got to be quarter to nine.
Nah, kidding.
All right, so we're on to just-
Yeah, we're just moving in a sense the draft of completeness, yeah.
I'm going to second it. Discussion by the board? We haven't opened this up to the public yet, though.
No, yeah, yeah.
Open this up to the public before we vote. Anyone from the public like to speak on this?
Well, I'll say something, Carolyn's favor. All she's asking you people to do is comply to the law, and if you tear down a building, I'm not sure about your codes here, but usually, once that building's gone, it's considered a new build, and you have to apply that condition of a new build, not what was there. I don't know, you decide.
Did you get her name?
I don't think she stated her name, sir.
Oh, Suzanne Farley.
Anyone else like to speak? All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public.
I'll second it.
Second to close the public hearing, further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? I think that's unanimous.
Yep.
Okay, now we have a motion before us for completeness. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Ananmas, all right.
The vote that is complete.
I'd like to.
Vote is complete.
Okay, but now we'll move on the actual project, all right?
Yeah, the second part of it, yeah. Chair's got a seventh one, so I can only read the first six if you want to make the motion.
Let me, let's just discuss that.
Okay.
Jim, would you have a problem with shifting that another three feet?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't hear you.
Would you have a problem with shifting that building another three feet?
Make it 15?
Yes.
Can you clarify which direction?
That would be from-
Of course it would.
Your neighbor to the garage.
Let's pick a deal.
Be 15 feet off the southeasterly boundary line.
So that-
So that he's in-
Corner.
With the setback.
Right, okay.
And that would reduce the front slightly because the building then would slide northwesterly.
He's here.
44 feet, right? 44 feet in width, 42 feet in width.
42.
And that would narrow the sideline towards the garage to a boat where the bulkhead sticks out.
But you're sliding that towards, because the, the water-
Towards the corner space.
Because the water is on the other side of the lot, too.
It, it brings that front, the water side, left corner brings it slightly closer to the shore, still outside of the 25 feet. If my scale's right, about 36.
Versus 31?
38. There's only two foot difference. The current front corner is in the 25 feet.
Yes, yes.
And we're still bringing it back 13 feet on the front.
And, and he's proposing 38, but you want 36?
No, that corner just falls wherever it falls, because on the backside, you got to provide room for the septic tank, and then eight feet to the house, because there's an eight, because there's a foundation under that house, you have to have an eight foot setback. It's not a leach field issue, because that's out in that mound area on the front.
Yeah.
This is just a tank.
Sorry, Mr. Yates, we're going by the magic marker.
Yeah, sorry.
So what do you think?
Well, as my opening statement said, I said 12's easy for me to get. We're going to push for 15, it may be 15 on one corner, a little bit less on the other, but I, I, if it's doable without any hazards in the ground, anything that we're going to come across-
The stump's coming out, right?
Stump's coming out.
There's going to be a big hole right there.
No, even though I know it's not technically preferred, but the stump is coming out, it'll be all right.
Can I get your picture, by the way?
Yep.
Yeah, cool. All right. If you look at number five, it says per standard found the planning board approval of this site plan, we don't have a site plan, we got a boundary survey with some mark on it. So my seven was to be prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant or agent shall provide the code enforcement officer and town planner with a site plan showing the 42 by 40 foot proposed building, and we can add with, with a 15 foot offset on the southeasterly side on the lot with the setbacks. Number two, the floodplain line and a site benchmark to provide the town code enforcement officer with a basis to check the finished floor or the structure's basement. Right now, there's no way for the code enforcement officer to go out there, that's a matter of getting the surveyor out there and driving a nail in something that says-
Get a benchmark.
-elevation, whatever it is, so you can just, and good, good for you to have, too.
Yes.
So that was my number seven. It said it out of site plan.
I'd like the, way the chair read it, but-
Can we read it again?
No, I have no problem, in a sense, but you want us to read the whole thing, or just accept it as written?
I think we just, number five, we need to change the site plan.
Sure, that's not a problem.
We either need to put boundary survey or- We either need to put boundary survey or just-
I mean, you just take out site and just, this plan.
This plan, perfect.
And I would, if we're gonna edit that anyway, I'd, uh, take out the retention of and make it a, a practical improvement of the existing nonconformities.
Where are we? Actual? I lost you, Scott.
Uh, the, so the site plan is the first sentence in number five, the second sentence is, "The proposed plan represents a retention of the existing nonconformities, such a, it is an improvement, especially with the side setback one, so."
That makes sense. I follow you now. I think that just gives, I mean, it doesn't have to be any more than a clean copy of the boundary survey with an actual physical border on it of the new building, showing a fifteen-foot setback on that southeasterly side. And whatever that front setback is, with a scaled distance, so that the code enforcement officer, when he goes out there, has something to check it, assuming he's checking the foundation. That was my thoughts on that.
The rest of the board thing, I think it's okay. What's up?
I'm okay.
Yeah? Mr. Chair, do we have to read, you want me to read the, you know?
We gotta at least read the, we've already read-
I'll read the first part, you can read your conditions now that we-
All right, that's fair.
I'll say, "Move that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for the application submitted by James Yates on behalf of Jack and Nan Carney DeBode for the removal and replacement of illegally nonconforming house at Four Rocky Shores Avenue in Standish, having found the application to meet the requirements of two thirty-seven, section twelve, two thirty-seven, section fifteen, two thirty-seven, sixteen, and all other applicable sections of the Standish Code of Ordinance with the following conditions." Mr. Chair, would you like to read them, because you got them now worked out?
One, "All work shall be in accordance with the materials and plans submitted by the-" Gates.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know with the Don Nichols thing, we just keep on the-
Stuck in the computer won't leave us-
Yeah.
"Which consists of a site plan." I'm gonna drop the site. "Consists of a plan, building elevations, and supporting application materials. Two, this approval shall lapse and become a void in one year as late as section two thirty-seven, sixteen F. Three, the code enforcement officer will approve an erosion control plan prior to issuance of any building permit. Four, the code enforcement officer will approve a replanting plan of significant trees, if any, removed as part of this project prior to the issuance of the building permit. Stand is found in two thirty-seven, twelve, C one B, the planning board approval of this plan is limited to to structure setbacks to the maximum practical extent. Six, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposals and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed by the applicant or applicant's agent, either orally or in writing, and that any variation from the plan proposal and supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve. And seven, prior to issuing any building permits, the applicant or agent shall provide the code enforcement officer and town planner with a site plan showing the forty-two by forty-four foot proposed building with a fifteen-foot offset off the southeasterly boundary on the lot with the setbacks. The flood, and then, uh, the second part of that is the floodplain line and a site benchmark shown to provide the town a basis to check the finished floor of the structure basement."
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it, or was that the first?
You made the motion, I'll second it.
Okay, there we go. Keeping track of things.
You get a combined effort on that one.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, board. Enjoy your evening.
Yep. Do you want my paper?
Sorry, Jack, can we apologize?
You might have to smooth it out, I was a little rough there. All right, number three. Five Brothers Development, seventy-two Barney Eagle Road, map ten, lot ninety-eight, map thirty-five, lot thirty-two. Subdivision application to build a hundred and fifty-five condominium units, the Woodlands. Mr. Roma, looks like you're on.
Well, um, point of order, Mr. Chairman, before we get too far into this-
Yes.
Last November, Five Brothers came to the board to, um, for the cider mill project. And at that time, we asked about the completion of the product for the Brookstone development. We were still looking for the street tree planting. So, we're a year later, and I'm just wondering, what is the status of the, the street, the tree, street planting in the first development in Brookstone? I know that own, so ha, ha, is that complete now?
It's still under construction.
Well, Brookstone has been finished for quite some time, and people have been in their property for well over a year. This was last November. I mean, I thought I recollected that, and when I checked, it was November sixth meetings, minutes, that, um, the street, the tree planting is still, um, we asked that it, you know, there's something happened with that. And that part of the road and that part of the development is all complete, except for the street trees. So, how long do we wait before one development is complete before we start on another? I guess is my question.
I don't think there is a timeframe.
Well, here we have letter K.
It's up to the code enforcement officer to make sure that they follow through with what they're supposed to do. We don't have any policing action as this board.
The only policing action this board has, which is technically none, is that there is an approval criteria, when we get to final approval, that they cannot be in violation of any previous approvals.
Right.
Yeah.
At that time, we'll need a statement from the code officer saying they are not in violation or are, and then we won't be able to do it. But that's a, I don't think that, I don't think we need to worry about that till we're actually approving the project. It's, it's worth bringing up so they know that we're looking for it.
Yes, right, exactly.
Well made.
Finish the first one before we go to more and more and more. I guess what I'm concerned about is I didn't even see any kind of street tree planting included in this project, so it's almost like it's an afterfact that doesn't matter. I hope that's not the case.
Are we ready?
Ready.
So, Dustin Roma with DM Roma Consulting Engineers, representing Five Brothers Development for the Woodlands project. This is a project we've been, you know, working on for most of this year, developing these plans, working through some iterations, um, working with the various state agencies and, you know, town agencies, Water District, on coming up with the plan that's in front of you here tonight. So, um, it's certainly taken some time to kind of lay out a project of, of this size kind of all at once. So, we did have a workshop a few months ago with the board with a plan that was essentially very similar to the one you have in front of you here tonight. There may be a few revisions, but as far as the road locations and, um, general number of units, intersections, things like that, the plan is substantially similar to the one that we presented you at the workshop. Kind of in summary, we've got a hundred and fifty-five total dwelling units on the property. Of those units, a hundred and thirty-one will be single-family detached homes intended as three-bedroom units with garages. We also have twenty-four total units of, um, units of dwellings that'll be in multifamily buildings. So we've got, uh, three eight-unit buildings shown on the plans here that will be two-story construction, so they won't be really any larger in scale than a colonial with essentially two stories and a pitched roof. So it should fit in well with the other structures in the neighborhood. We do have dedicated parking areas set aside just for those multifamily buildings, as well as an onsite dumpster pad. We are working on, or we have, uh, put together a lighting plan for the project. It wasn't in your packets, but it's one that we've been working with a consultant on lighting plans. So the, the plans that we present to you, um, as part of kind of our, our final plan application, we'll have, um, a photometric plan showing those lighting locations at the intersections. We've kind of focused on, um, the, the main intersections of the project, as well as the multifamily building and, uh, what we're showing as a community center building, uh, to provide some lighting, um, as well as the, the outdoor pickleball court area. The community building itself, we're still in the process of doing some space planning for that, to figure out exactly what that building's, um, size and, um, you know, shape and, uh, is gonna be. So, we will be coming forward with detailed architectural plans showing exactly what that building is going to be. But for now, the way, um, what's intended in that building is, um, is a pool area, indoor pickleball courts, as well as some, um, just indoor gathering space. In that building, we're calling it a community building, but it's really, it's intended for the residents of the neighborhood only, so it's not gonna be a public access community building. It'll be owned, managed, maintained, paid for completely by the residents of the neighborhood under their command. We're working with the Water District, as I've said, on the design of the water main system, so they've had a chance to go through all of our plans, given us some, um, comments on just some of the design considerations. Goes back into them this week. We have kind of an approval sign-off from them within the next couple of weeks. The wastewater will be disposed onsite. The dark brown areas that you see throughout the property there are all individual onsite wastewater disposal systems. We have, two of the systems are larger systems that will be in excess of two thousand gallons per day design flow for those leach fields. We have submitted those plans to the state for approval. They've been reviewed and, um, they've given us a verbal that the systems are acceptable as they've been designed, so we expect to get the, the written permits from the state on those two larger septic systems here within the next week. With that, we also submitted a minimum lot size variance to the state, just based on the amount of wastewater flow that is designed for the site compared to the total site size. And that approval will be coming from the state as well, along with that engineered septic system. So when we come back to you with a final plan, we'll have those permits in hand to demonstrate that those systems have been reviewed and approved. We've submitted to the main DEP for our site location permit, as well as our tier-two NRPA wetland alteration permit. That permit has been under review now for a couple of months. We expect to get a permit decision maybe towards the end of the year, sometime with Thanksgiving, Christmas time, depending on workload. So, that, that one is a little bit further out than the other ones. Stormwater management design is accomplished through a multiple stormwater filter ponds and, as well as a wet pond. The areas that are just colored in in blue on the plans represent all of the different stormwater management filter pond or wet pond features that'll be built out for the project. It's a best management practice to try and spread out the stormwater the best you can to try and maintain what is current drainage patterns on the property. So, we'll have, the analysis that we've included in your packets includes pre and post-development watershed analysis at various study points throughout the site to show that we're managing flood flows. And that's accomplished through multiple stormwater ponds, as we show on these plans. The color coding that you see on this graphic here generally represents kind of what we anticipate for phasing. So everything that's in blue, we're, um, kind of our preliminary phasing is that the infrastructure would be built out for that as a phase one. We may be, um, kind of breaking that up into sub-phases because we've got multifamily buildings, we've got the community center, and then we've got the single-family homes along those two legs of road. So when we work through the final plans with the town, as far as performance guarantees and expectations for completeness of infrastructure before we can get building permits, uh, we may break that up into some smaller phases, just so that we don't have so much infrastructure being built before any homes are started. But we also want to make sure we've built sufficient infrastructure so that we're not just building little pieces along the way. So that'll be kind of carefully coordinated with the Public Works Department ahead of time, just so that it's clear to the board what the, uh, kind of phasing will be. And, um, you know, with a project of this size, again, it, it may be that, that we take more than one phase at a time, it may be that we break it up into smaller phases, but that'll be something that we'll, again, have to carefully coordinate, um, as we put together performance guarantees and complete the, the paving and all the site work before we get going on some of these buildings. We have hired a landscape architect to assist us with these plans, so to your point about the street trees, there, there are none on the plans now, it's because we wanted to basically give our landscape architect a blank canvas to work with. So, they'll be preparing graphics for requirements for street trees along the roadways, um, landscaping around the multifamily buildings, landscaping around the community buildings. We've got some common areas in and around the intersections and the outdoor pickleball courts, so we'll have some of these focus areas that will incorporate both lighting and landscaping. And, like I said, we've got Swainy lighting, it's got a full, comprehensive lighting plan for the project already, and then we've got a landscape architect that'll be doing the landscaping plan, and all of these will be kind of married together, and we'll bring those in front of you here again for that, uh, final plan review. We've been working pretty diligently on traffic, uh, design for the project. At this time, I don't have necessarily concrete answers for exactly what is gonna be implemented for this project. We do have more than a hundred vehicle trip ends, which requires us to coordinate through the main DOT for, um, for this project. So, we've submitted a, uh, traffic movement permit scoping document, which is being reviewed by them currently. So the next step will be to meet with the DOT, to review all of the data. That information was included in your packet, so everything that's beyond the little tab in our books here is all of the traffic design data that was prepared for the project. That information was submitted to Coral Palmer, who did the peer review for the traffic information. They had a number of comments and things that they wanted us to consider. So, all of these things are being worked on collaboratively right now between our traffic engineering consultant, the peer review consultant hired by the town, and DOT, as well as Public Works. So, we have lots of people that are gonna have eyes on this before it comes to you and says, here's what we're doing. All indications so far are that we will likely have a left turn lane into the site, based on the traffic volumes that are on thirty-five currently. There'll be some discussion about when that gets implemented, whether it's an initial phase right off the bat, or if it's something about halfway through, or, you know, we'll figure out when that's warranted, um, in coordination with DOT. And as far as what else is required, again, we don't have concrete evidence yet, but I just wanted to, again, you've had the, you have some of the data in front of you, and I just wanted to provide some assurance to you that it's all being looked at very carefully, and it'll be very well vetted by the time we come to you with what's being proposed for improvements. We talked about connectivity at the workshop, so the locations where we're proposing, um, physically built roadways to the property lines, as well as one area of reserved right away of an unbuilt portion of road. That was all done in the context of looking at that connectivity master plan that we prepared as part of the workshop phase. So, they're kind of laid out in a methodical way to provide ample opportunity in some critical areas where people can potentially connect into these roads. critical areas where people can potentially connect into these roads. We have a desire for these roads to be accepted as public roads. I think certainly Road A seems like it would provide some connectivity benefit to the town as it provides links to other properties and is also a main road that was identified in the Standish Corner District Regulating Plan as a road to be built to provide that connection eventually down to the backside of Colonial Marketplace. But again, we know that's not the board's decision. That'll eventually go to the council and we'll work through, for Public Works to make sure the roads are built in such a way that they are eligible for acceptance, and then we'll work to hopefully get these roads accepted as public ways.
Question on that, can Randall's Orchard ever be developed? We're showing all these accesses into it.
So the portion here is not in the, the trust? Well, it's owned by a trust. It is not protected by the land trust. The portion to the very top here, that piece is. So way up here. But this piece that is this whole chunk here is not part of the land trust land.
In the land to the south?
That's not Rand. Oh, yes, it is Randall too. I think that's in the, the land trust. I think the only piece he has out is the piece here that goes down and has access straight to Ospey Trail.
Yeah, that's how I understand it too.
Was that the 50 acres they just bought?
He's owned it for the three years that I've lived, I've been working in town, so I don't know about just bought.
So that land to the south?
The 50, the land he just bought is down on the, the line.
I'm trusting.
Sounds good to me. Randall Road.
I'm just wondering, we show that the road tying into that property.
That, I mean.
It could never be developed.
It can be developed.
A little bit to get it into.
Charlie, that, that land can be developed. He's, he's currently discussing.
The lot that actually is in the land trust is defined.
There's a lot of land in the land trust. This piece is not.
Wow.
So kind of in that southern corner where we're not developing anything back there, that all abuts the land trust land. But along the side, so basically that whole eastern sideline, my understanding is that that is a parcel that's owned by Randall that is not.
Here, Charlie, I can, I can pull it up. Goes through to Dana's property, right?
Correct, yeah.
And then over to Hannaford's.
Yep.
I just wanted to get that straight in my head as to.
Certainly, yeah. No, yeah, it wouldn't make any sense to provide connections to a land trust parcel.
These that can't be developed, it wouldn't make any sense.
So I don't know how well this is going to show up on the projector, but this parcel here is the one in question. These ones in red are the ones owned by Randall that are in the protection. This piece is the one we're talking about that is also owned by Randall but is not under the land trust protection.
He did that.
And he owns this piece. I don't believe he's put it in the trust, but this is, that's the recent acquisition that he bought just earlier this year, last year.
So the one in brown, those lots in brown are in the presumptive trust?
Right. Those have an easement held on them. This piece is the one we're talking, that has the road connections to it.
And we've got a, an access way into the other one.
Not to this one. Not to any of the ones in brown.
Yeah, no, there's one in there. Goes to the brown one.
Nope. I don't think, I think it connects.
Yeah, it does. Well, the, the road ends at the property line, so it technically, I guess, would end at the Randall's. That'd be Road D, the end of Road D.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking it was down on the, the next one down.
Yeah, you can see the property line, it basically hits right there.
That line, yeah, so.
It's a, it's a single-family lot on the street side of that, and then it's the land trust land on the back.
All right. I just wanted to make sure we had roads that were usable.
Sure. Yeah, and I guess the only other things to note, we are providing sidewalks throughout the project, so all of the roads that are being built have sidewalks. We also have kind of a cross-country sidewalk that links the, the parking area adjacent to the community building. It will run along the front of the building and then connects back into Road B so that you've got, you know, people that can kind of walk through those areas. It creates a loop, and that's going to be a wider trail. I think it's eight feet wide. So that's kind of more of a multi-use trail connection there so that folks can kind of make their way over to the pickle, outside pickleball court areas and people that live in, in, over in that phase two area can get to the community building without going all the way out and around down from Road A, so.
Yeah. A couple of questions around the sidewalks. I would make that connection 10 feet wide so that if you have bicyclists, they can go by each other. And then Scott, on Route 35, Bonny Eagle Road, should there be a sidewalk in front of the development on both sides on the Route 35?
I mean, I think it's somewhat to the board's discretion, but I think that's a reasonable.
If, if this was a business right there, would it require it?
If we were building something fronting on that road, that, a site plan development for that would likely require a site, a sidewalk there, yes.
We probably ought to look where the ditches are there, because that's state highway, right?
Yeah.
Is that in the compact zone?
Yes.
So we have some jurisdiction over it, okay.
Would that just be along the property frontage on 35?
Why is the emergency access road? If we're going to service additional passes to the rear, why wouldn't we want that to be at least a right-of-way up through there, 50 feet or whatever the magic wit is? I, I don't see that it's got to be paved at this point. Maybe a developer in the future would have to pave it, but I would think we'd want to have that of adequate width.
I think they have to own it too, but.
Tom would.
Who?
Because the town can take all those other pieces, but with a $1 purchase, if I'm correct.
Yeah, so, so that emergency access way with the gate, I mean, it's no problem to put a right-of-way on that to, so at least it's set aside. I mean, it's a condo development, so at least that would provide indication to the owners that if at any point it was deemed necessary to make that a road and take the gate out, then at least the rights were there and the town could do it. I don't see a negative to that.
Is that one of the?
Wetland impacts will be all permitted, so it's, it's basically built out as a road. I mean, we're doing the work to, you know.
There's no houses.
Permit to wetland, there's no houses in it, there's no utilities in it, so there's no power, there's no water, there's no.
I'd like to see it be a road because I think there should be more than one way in and out of that development. There's a lot of houses in there. I think that's a mistake to just have one way in and out.
I think what'll happen is as we, as we come forward with the plans for the improvements on 35, what you'll see is, what we don't want to have is people short-circuiting the safety improvements that we're putting in at that intersection. So if we're going to have left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes and shadow lanes, and we're really going to make that intersection have what it's needed for people to safely access this neighborhood, if we then put another road just downhill of it that can be accessed from people, then they won't utilize all those same features that are going to be put in at the main intersection. So if people are approaching at a 45 mile an hour zone and they need a deceleration lane on the right to let cars safely pass, there won't be one at the other intersection because there's not going to be anywhere near the amount of use on that other intersection compared to the main intersection because certainly it'll never see the true, the through traffic from the other developments. So it's really just servicing that Road D area. So that, that was our concern. Again, as we implement these safety improvements, we really want to funnel all the traffic through that intersection to the extent we can, but we want to still have a safety, you know, a secondary way to get in and out of here if they need it. So the fire department can come down there, open the Knox box, swing the gate open, and they've got a gravel access road to be able to get in and out if there's an accident there or something or a reason to get out of the neighborhood.
If we have a defined right-of-way though, at least in the future it can be potentially made.
Certainly, yeah. If, if it works into some bigger master plan and, and there's a benefit for it to be a road in the future, then at least the rights have been reserved so that the condo can't object.
So I want to ask this question. So, so that center road going to, towards Randall's and Colonial Marketplace, that's going to be a public road. Is there going to be signs or gates saying private way to turn left or right? Are you going to allow traffic?
Our preference would be for, our preference would be for all the roads to be public, but we're, you know, we're realistic in understanding that the town may not want to accept one or both of those roads, you know? And it might be something that more development needs to happen on the Randall property or on the other adjacent property because certainly those, it would be in the town's interest to secure public rights over these roads, then they would be able to convey those public rights to those other adjacent properties. Because if those are condo roads in the neighborhood, then we won't have an interest in granting rights to those neighboring properties.
Right.
Because we won't want their.
I think that's the whole purpose of why we have.
The whole purpose of them being public roads is that.
Who've been there about purchasing the right-of-ways for a dollar so the town does control.
The other questions I had around the sidewalks was a couple of the crossings, would there be just painted marks or would there be, could we have flashing beacons, especially on that main road? You have one going over to the community center from the multifamily area, which is, how many units is in the multifamily area?
Yeah, we can take a look, that was one of the things that the traffic analysis kind of deals with is pedestrian movement. So we can certainly take a look at when those type of facilities are more.
I was thinking right, right there and then probably at the intersection of Road B and D and A, you know, you're, you have, because people are going to be coming, they have to cross Road D over to the sidewalk to get to the community center or to Road B to get the community center. You're driving everybody to the community center by walking. I would think most of the people are going to walk. So doing that safely.
Yeah, the, the lighting plan, I think, will help when, when you see that, and you'll see how we're lighting up all those intersections there. And then we'll definitely look at the possibility of if there needs to be some sort of pedestrian warning type thing. I mean, they, they tend to be kind of a nuisance and just the amount of flashing lights that are there and stuff, so we'll have to just think about where they're going to go and just kind of balance the, living around the flashing lights versus.
Yeah, I would look at like a subdivision called Golden Oak in Buena Vista that I visited and very high-end gated community. Had a community building, had a playground, which was another question I had, was there any plan for being an outdoor playground? And they had sidewalks on both sides, they had flashing beacons at every crossing, and then they also had ground beacons as well, which probably won't work here with snow removal, but, and there was virtually no one there. So, you know, they're like 20 million dollar houses and not a soul out there, but I see a lot more people walking around this neighborhood. So those are my questions. And then the question about the playground, if you had an answer to that.
Yeah, so we do intend to have outdoor playground facilities and, you know, potentially more than one, but again, those, those are some of those landscape elements that we'll include as we do, again, the, the space planning for the community building and then the outdoor recreation planning for the playground areas, landscaping, lighting.
You'll show it on the final plans?
Yep.
Okay, cool. That's all I have for questions.
Do you want to add anything else, Scott?
I mean, I think we're, this is a big project. I think we should take our time with it, so this is a good day, meeting to wrap our heads around just even what it is. I think the board should talk about anything else they need to see, which we started on, on a few points, and that's great. And then if we want to have a sidewalk, we should go ahead and get that scheduled in.
I think we could move the fact that we have enough information for preliminary review.
Yeah, if you want to do a completeness.
We have a fair amount here.
Along with the plans.
We have a lot of information, and I think, you know, we're coming up into September, October, it's going to be getting cooler, the days are shorter, and we might not want to be out there during hunting season on a sidewalk. If we want a sidewalk, do members of the board like to have a sidewalk out here?
Would love to have.
Are there any internal roads or networks to get around? Is it all just jungle?
No.
So Road A is actually very walkable in its general layout. So, and then honestly, the best thing to do, once you get to Road, you basically walk to the end of Road A, up to Randall's property, and then walk the rear property line. It won't necessarily take you along the road's center lines, but you'll get a sense of the lay of the land, the type of wetlands that are out there. And really, walking Road A, you can get a good sense. It's, it's very thick going down to the, I guess, to the south, Road D. It meanders in and around some, we have some wetland crossings that are wet. What we can, what's actually the best, what we did when we dug all the test pits and everything is we walked Road A, and then we walked the rear boundary line up to the end of Road C. And then you can basically take Road C up and, and kind of walk that whole, what we're calling phase two, which is the left side of the plan there. So if you walk along that backside, you can walk along all through there, and then we can, at that point, you can make a decision if you want to walk.
The jungle.
Where are your toll booths?
I can, I mean, there's a lot of flagging out there. We've got flagging that we've laid out for center line because we dug test pits all the way up and through there to generate ledge profiles. We haven't hit ledge through there. We dug, we had excavators in there digging very deep for those engineered septic systems, and we doing the centerline profiles, and we, we didn't even hit it, so we had to stop digging. But I can bring my GPS with me so that if you decide you want to walk along, I can at least tell you where we are. It's a lot to, it's a lot to flag, like exactly at like 100-foot stations all through there. Probably take me three days.
It may change.
And, yeah, I don't think it's going to change, but I think we can get a pretty good sense of where we are just walking around because of the topography that's out there, the wetlands, the test pits, and, and I've walked it enough that I can be your tour guide, but I just don't want you to expect to see lots of flagging and have it not be there. I think I can do a good job of telling you exactly where we are on the plans just as a guide. Go for it.
I've looked, copious amounts of concerns. My biggest are outlined in the engineering review memorandum, like number 27 with a lot size variance. The Cram Road project was like three acres for 20 ounces. This is like .36 for 155. The other thing is that, of course, I don't remember if Mrs. Beagle was on the school board, but when we talked about extending the water main down towards like the, the district, the Portland Water District told us that even extending it for like even a quarter of a mile, they'd have to improve the tank system at the hill. So until, as outlined in number 28, unless you have a means or, sorry, main extension or letter to serve, I'd be very reluctant to, you know, because you need to have that kind of stuff worked out. This is a massive project, also because it's a septic system and that is, sorry, for those of you who drive down 35 on occasion, that's the ones, you're right near where that's where we get a lot of water. I was looking at, sorry, pages 26 to 31 of the plans, you know, the subsurface and the rest of it and, and all the stuff in here. There's over 380 pages you gave us, but I read them all. I have serious concerns about the area, and the lot size variance is my biggest one and same as the water main. Without the water, without the Portland Water District, that's, there's no way that the neighborhood or even that area can handle that kind of draw, you know, without the water, water district.
Yeah, I totally agree.
A lot size variance because it's a condo project?
That's from the state.
The state?
Yeah.
And we're actually not that far off. I think, I think we, we're supposed to have 69 acres, I think, for the amount of, that's just with, you know, designing straight septic systems. If you had 69 acres, I think you would not need a variance, and, and we're at 55 acres.
55.8.
Yeah. So it's not like, it's not a big difference, and we are incorporating advanced treatment in these larger septic systems. So these all have advanced aeration chambers, and I, I can, I'm not trying to downplay your concern at all. It was, it's our concern as well, I mean, it's our stamp on these plans. We have to be very cautious. as well, I mean, it's our stamp on these plans, we have to be very confident in what we're putting out there, and that's why, you know, we hire specialists that help us with, you know, the nitrate analysis, the septic designs, and we get multiple levels of reviews to make sure that it's done right.
As I said, that's a very wet area, I will be wearing my tall boots, Mr. Chair, when we ever, if we do a site walk on that one, but as Carolyn remembers when we were on the school board, the septic, sorry, having, let's say, a non-working or issues with a septic system, even though it was designed by great engineers, as, we still had to end up having to replace our whole system even though it was a twenty million dollar system. So my concerns are very, that's a very difficult area based on the water level and where it comes in, it's the, it's kind of at the hill and the dip, that's a very tough area to kind of like, that's too much, there's a lot of water there, especially during some, you know, heavy rains and the rest of it. So my concerns are, this is a, the lot variance and the, and the waste water and the, in the sense the, the public water are real big concerns for me.
What watershed is this one in, Presasket?
Yeah, it's, it's in, I'll have to double check on that, I know we, might even be the Little River, but, yeah, I think it's Little River.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's a Little Branch, probably, yeah.
Can you speak to some of the long-term maintenance of some of the utilities such as the private sanitary systems, the road network? You know, how are those gonna be maintained in perpetuity?
Sure, so, we do have several pump stations on the property, so those will be dual pump systems that will be maintained, all of this will be maintained by the condo association. What we're gonna end up having is some individual condo associations inside of a bigger umbrella association, just because of the number of units. There's a lot of benefits to having management kind of at a smaller, just like you have local government, state government, federal government, it's in these larger projects, if you can break it up into some smaller condominium units where they can have some better local control and then have an overarching agreement that everybody participates in for things like, you know, the pump stations, plowing of the roads, because it's in everyone's benefit in the neighborhood to have all the roads plowed, all the sidewalks plowed. The intent would be to maintain the sidewalks throughout the winter because it is the access point for a lot of folks to get into the, those indoor facilities. So, until the town, you know, takes over the roads, if ever, then the condo association would maintain, you know, plowing and pavement maintenance, crack sealing, all of that stuff of the roadways, and then the town can kind of pick and choose if it wants to accept some of these roads, we hope they do, then they would take over some of those responsibilities. We will be having some discussions with Public Works about some things like the on-street parking spaces, I think that's kind of a gray area for maintenance where we're certainly willing to assume responsibility kind of in perpetuity for those parking spaces, so if the town decides as a condition of public acceptance, if it does not want to have to maintain some of those on-street parking spaces, if that's an option, you know, we'd be willing to craft some sort of-
And you would, you would, you would still do the community building parking lot and the multifamily parking lot?
Oh, yeah, those will, those will always be privately maintained.
Those will always be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so-
So you're already gonna be there?
Yeah, so there's already going to be-
There's already gonna be somebody there.
-a maintenance contractor that's there responsible for snow removal, even if the town takes the roads.
Exactly.
So adding in the on-street parking spaces as well as the cross-country sidewalk is non-issue.
Yeah. Another reason to make the, that ten feet too, so you can get a good-sized plow right on.
If the town accepts these roads, would the town be accepting like the sanitary infrastructure within the right of way? And how would that be maintained with like the private leach field systems?
Yep, yeah, those are all good questions, I think this is a different type of project that the town hasn't had to deal with before, so as far as ownership of those utilities, that will be something that we're gonna be working with staff on, and we'll, if, we, we want to design this in a way so that it can be accepted, and then if we have to exempt out certain things, because like you were saying, you certainly don't want the sewers to be a public utility because they drain into a septic system which has a design capacity, so we don't want to just allow extensions of infrastructure for sewer. So, those are things we'll have to, we'll have to work out as far as those utilities, the water mains will be owned by the district, and then power will all be underground, that'll be owned by CMP, so the sewer will need to be something that we discuss. We have done it in other communities, I guess I will just caveat it with that, we have had other roads that have private sewer infrastructure in them. We did some, you know, forty, fifty unit projects where the town has taken ownership of the roads, but they've got, you know, storm drain infrastructure that drains to private ponds and sewer lines that are in the roads, and we were able to craft some language in there about maintenance responsibilities and rights to connect and things like that.
And the town's gonna want to have some rights on those stormwater ponds too, because the road waters go in it.
Yep.
At some point.
Yeah, those are all the details that, again, we're, over the next couple of months, we'll get all that really finalized.
Sounds good. What's the board's thoughts on, well, one, I guess, do we want to hold off opening it up for public comment, do we, you have our site walk?
I mean, I think it's worth opening it up so that they know what people are looking at, so they can address it as we move forward, it's always the worst thing to put stuff off and then them have to come back again for something new, so.
Well, does the board have any more further discussion before we open it up to the public?
Nope, I was just gonna take a brief break, brief recess for a second, we've been going for three hours now, we're already going for four.
Let's take a couple minutes.
So, five-minute break before we do the public hearing?
Where do we go with that, that's the question.
Open it up to the public for them to make presentation, if you just go to the podium, give us your name, concerns. This is an informational-type meeting at this point, so. Anyways, anyone like to speak?
Come on, Anthony.
Anthony Folsom. Stand as resident. I went up and looked at the map, I hadn't heard anybody mention anything about parking for the community center and how many parking lots are gonna be there, especially is, this is just gonna be like a seasonal thing, that there's not gonna be enough room for people to go there and park in the winter? And another thing, the site walk, I know when you guys came down and did a site walk by my house, there was a time limit on it, but we didn't do any of the whole site, we only did a little teeny bit of the road, and everything got approved by the very little bit of distance, and I hope if you guys, because even that was supposed to be a wetland, I was the only one that showed up, showed up with rubber boots, because we was gonna walk the whole piece. I totally understand it was only a little piece, but we parked at the cemetery, only walked down about four hundred feet of the site walk, there was more development beyond, and then we came back to the cemetery and stopped, we never went from there all the way out to the Oak Hill Road and all the way down to the other end of the development. So I hope when the site walk is done, it's done complete, and I know it's a lot of walking and stuff like that, but it needs to be done.
Thank you. Next, anybody?
First, I've never been to a planning board meeting, so I'm here to learn.
Okay.
And I have questions.
All right, and your name, please?
Suzanne Farley. My first question would be, is, they keep talking about the benefit to the town, so I want to know which committee you go to about the cost analysis of what it would mean to the taxpayers, like the police, the fire, the school. So who answers all those questions before, do, do you have different things coming in to make the final decision? Like a group of doctors coming together, were there different perspectives and what their specialties are?
Relative to the benefits?
Yeah, I mean, like the cost analysis, well, I jotted this down off Google, to be honest, just a quick analysis, there's a hundred and sixty-three national average to educate one child, and if you, I'm going by today's standards, and if you taxed each one of those houses five thousand dollars, at the end of twelve years, it would only be sixty thousand dollars, so the taxpayer is a hundred thousand dollars in the negative. So I'm just wondering, who, who has done all this research?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, board members, but I believe the school board would be the one that would review the cost per student and allocation of money there.
Sorry, the budget, as Carolyn and I sat on the school board, the Budget Advisory Committee meets to discuss the school budget every year, goes from like November to March. When it comes to town budget issues, there's the Town Budget Committee as well as the Town Council, and they have a budget process that starts in February and usually resolves in April. A cost-benefit analysis of this is that when the plans for this development came out, the, the school district chair, the school board, as well as the superintendent, were informed, these are public records, but they're, you know, there has always been a concern, and Carolyn knows this from her school board days as well, is whenever the Budget Advisory Committee looks at it, we try to anticipate building permits and developments, this is a quite substantial one. We're not talking about twenty houses on Cram Road here over several years, this is a large development. So cost-benefit analysis is hard to figure when you're not actually talking enrollment, but those are the organizations and-
I think that should be a big part of the information that comes together with the environment, the cost analysis of, of a big project like this, that all should be considered?
Well, as I served six years on the Budget Committee before term limits ousted me and I, I now am here, as well as I served on the Budget Advisory Committee for the last six years, it's always, you know, paramount in my thought process, the case is that, but when it comes to a project like this, it's not only, to Carolyn's point is, we have a copious amount of projects that have been done or under development, trying to put a gauge on the fact of whether these projects actually come to fruition is another hard thing, because there's also, you know, projects that have been submitted but have not been completed, so.
I think maybe you ought to be considering a moratorium on any new building?
That would be up to you to the Town Council, sorry.
So, Town Council decision?
That guy right over there.
Oh, sorry, that's the chair of the Town Council sitting over there, he was the one who let me back in, and Andrew, by the way, that's Mr. Watson over there, is the Chair, the Chair of the Town Council.
Well, I just saw all of those, hundred and thirty-eight houses?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty, and they're gonna have, what, three or four?
You don't know, you don't really know how many kids are gonna be there, you know, so there, there is a lot of unknowns, but what you will also know is that the state has said we need, we need a lot more housing, we don't have enough housing for the number of people in Southern Maine, I think, what did they say, eighty-four thousand new units they need for housing? So with, with families, I mean, it's not all like two or three people in a household, there's a lot of families that are just couples or single people, or there's a lot of different-
Yeah, with three bedrooms though, usually.
Well, you, you know.
Most will be families, do you, do you think?
Well, I think some might be home offices, because a lot of people work in rural now, so there's a lot of unknowns.
Various.
But what we know is that when you have a lot of people in a community like that, chances are there's gonna be a lot more small businesses that also come to serve all the people that are in growing in Standish, so they come kind of hand to hand, so you definitely want growth, what's nice about a project like this is it's in your growth area, so it's not like you're going way, you know, far from the town center to plow all these roads, it's kind of compact and-
Right, and that's another question it leads me to, why is it that if you want to build one house, you have to have three acres?
Not anymore.
So the law changed, who changed the law, was that the town or the state?
The, this town changed the zoning ordinance a long time ago.
A long time ago?
Yes.
For this property, two thousand and eleven.
Right.
Oh, I see.
So in the rural areas you have three acres, but in their growth areas, it's a much smaller.
Right, so that means if I want to break out my five acres and have little houses on, I could do that now, is that what you're telling me?
If you're in this zone, yes.
Oh, a zone, I see.
The town is split up into a variety of zones, some of three acres, some are two acres.
And how did this zone, because of Hanifeld and the industry there?
The town's-
How did that result?
The town's comprehensive plan in two thousand and six identified this, the Standish Corner as one of our growth areas, and then after, from the recommendations of that two thousand and six comprehensive plan, the town worked on new zoning for the area, and they created the Form Based Code zoning for this section of town, that covers all the way from the Gorham Line up to past that, the building supply on Ospee Trail, and from here, if we include this Sebeka Lake Village all the way down to the lake, that, and those areas are-
Are we in this position now for the, because of the state, though, saying we don't have enough housing?
No, the state, that is just, there's, that has nothing to do with our local laws and rules.
So I'm just trying to figure out, as a taxpayer, how does this project benefit me in any way? You can explain that to me, I think it's wonderful. Go ahead.
Well, right now, the taxes paid on this is just on land, so-
Right, even the, that's the point it's making to you.
Yeah.
If they had one child at a hundred and sixty-three thousand from kindergarten to graduation, and if you charged him five thousand dollars a year taxes on that little house, it would only be, the same amount of time would only be sixty thousand dollars. So how do you, what, what's the gain to me?
You don't want children? You don't want, you don't want children? So our schools need to stay open, I think, I think Todd would back me up here that our population in our schools is going down, is that correct?
The enrollment figures for, sorry, nothing I'm not saying isn't part of the Bonnie Eagle website when you look at the Focus on Finance, our enrollment has kind of plateaued down over the last ten years, we haven't been growing up, it's been slowly going down. The SAD Six or the district represents Buxton, Hollis, Standish, Limington, and Fry Island, so when you talk about all, throughout all those towns, yeah, there's no one in Fry Island, but the case is that all the rest of the towns, we are not gaining, we've been slowly declining, it hasn't, you know, really declined exponentially, but it's declined slowly.
I, I graduated with almost four hundred kids in, in two thousand and seven, they're not even coming close to three hundred kids in this current year.
So that warrants this development, you think?
If we want to keep our schools open, sir, we might, we might want some kids.
That's just my observation, people that are paying taxes, they're very high already, and everybody, every town, because of all, everything that's gone up, so much money, whether it be your taxes or your groceries, no matter, your insurance on your car, your light bill, what, I am thinking of as a taxpayer is how this will benefit me, and I think all of you should be thinking the same thing, because we elect you to serve us, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Excuse me, I'm Elmer Farley, I live on River Road, and I was wondering about, like, they talked about, there's only one entrance here, we go over thirty-five every day, and it's right at the bottom of the hill, they can't put anything in there, but at the top of the hill where Apple Lane or whatever, everything's coming out there, right? They said that there was a, over on twenty-five, they were gonna put an emergency. Who owns that land? Do they own that land? Can you put a road in from twenty-five to that for wire?
To this parcel?
Yeah.
I think you'd have to cross at least two additional lots that they don't own.
That's, that's what I thought, and the parking, say, two or three people to a house, or two even, how many cars are gonna be going out that one road? And coming onto thirty-five, when the school buses and everything are going by there? I mean, there's a lot more, I don't know if you've really, that's no benefit to me.
Anticipation is outlined in the traffic report that they're working on, it is a good number.
Yeah, but they do have one entry. Yeah, but they do have one entry.
One main entrance, and then there's an emergency entrance.
Where is the emergency? On which, whose?
Carolyn's gonna point it out.
On what?
I think it should be...
It's on to Bonny Eagle.
Not an emergency.
It's off 35.
So where would that be off 35? Down?
That's at the top, that's at the bottom of the hill?
Yeah, down by the color.
But, anyway. I just, thank you.
Anybody else? In each of our meetings, we'll be open to the public, so opportunity for them to speak.
I'm assuming there will be more meetings?
Oh, yeah. Seeing none, I guess, is there a motion to close the public hearing at this point?
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second it.
Moving second to close the public comment for the discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? All right.
Mr. Strumpf?
No, I mean, are we doing a site walk for this?
Hope so.
We closed the public hearing, we didn't...
Site walk?
We're not moving on yet.
What's good for you?
I'm around. We lose a lot of daylight in the evenings this time of year.
We do.
It's not a small walk, if you're walking most of it, so...
Saturdays are fine for me. Doing a weekend. You can do it in the evening, it's, this is my job, so I can go anytime.
Been there many times. I have one Saturday available this month, that's the 21st.
I do not have any available.
Let me check my social calendar, I think I'm free.
No cost?
If you want to do it on an afternoon, that's fine, too. I mean, we got...
Yeah.
I mean, if we're there at 4:30 or 5, I mean, we can...
Three hours.
I think we'll get out of there before dark.
I can bring headlamps for everybody.
We're doing it quick right now, last, sunset's at 7, last light a little after. So if we can get in there at 4:35, then we can get a good two hours, but...
Carolyn, you're not available this month on a Saturday? Would you be during the week, maybe?
Spotty Wednesdays. Some Wednesdays. I, yeah. I have Sundays, some Sundays. I think I did block off Monday, when we would have a workshop normally.
Saturdays are not good for me, but pretty open. I like her Wednesdays. Be after 3:30.
I'm sorry, I've got the long boots, I'll be fine.
Workshop next week.
Honey, for the days, what's better?
And, sorry, right now, you know, you nailed the day, and I'll try to move things around. Right now, I don't have anything popping up.
Days work for you, Patrick, and all?
Yeah, after 5, Monday through Friday, Saturdays will work. Pretty flexible.
We do, when we would normally have a workshop, on the 16th? Are people available?
Works for me.
Yes.
That's next Monday.
Yeah.
Yep. And the current forecast looks beautiful. There's no rain in the forecast in the next 14 days.
Sound like joking. 16th at what time? 5?
Works for Patrick, he's a worker.
Well, Mondays are work from home, so I can, I can make 5, for sure. 4:30.
4:30 would be better.
I can do 4:30.
Work for you?
4:30 on the 16th?
No planning boards that afternoon?
Just my son's soccer game, but he's got a lot of those.
Oh. You don't want to take that?
He's only a sophomore, that's fine. Got a lot of games left.
All right.
4:30.
Apple site, is there parking for Uptown vehicles?
No. Actually, yes, I mean...
Because you have that existing house, right, that we can park at?
So if you pull in that driveway, you can come in on the grass and park behind the barn that's there, it's all pretty stable.
Make sure Jackie has the address, so we can get the right spot.
Sometimes I park on Apple Lane across the street, just on the side of the road, there's...
We don't want dozen cars there, though.
Oh, no, as I say, so you could kind of do both.
72 Bonny Eagle Road.
That's the magic number?
90 is the, is the law.
90?
Oh, I have 72, 72 as the house being demolished.
The house that's being demolished, Carolyn, I think it's 90, that's what they're saying.
I mean...
So, yeah, the 72 is the house that's coming down to build this?
Okay.
You guys have that now?
Yes.
So, okay, so we could park in that driveway and on the lawn or something?
And like I said, if you, if you just drive...
The applicant gonna mow the lawn, so we don't get any grass on our bike.
So 72, that's the number?
72, yeah, that's what he said.
Directly across the street from Apple.
Whatever it is.
Okay, I know what that is.
Jackie will send an email.
16th at 4:30.
Okay.
And then we'll just work with Scott, and we'll, when we're ready, we'll come back.
Sounds good.
Any final thoughts, anything the board needs from them, for when they come back? I think we all...
We'll wrap up as much as we can of loose ends.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I mean, it's, right. Our goal would be, we would submit and respond to all of the peer review comments, get all those cleaned up, and then we'd come back to you. We're still gonna be waiting on DEP permits and DOT permits and stuff like that, but we'd like to be able to come back to you before then and discuss a preliminary approval once we get the Water District to say we're good to go, get all the peer review comments...
They checking out pressure, too?
What's that?
Are they checking out their pressures, too? Because I know there's some comments on the other one about pressure.
Yeah, I mean, the Water District's talking about doing a looped feed on their costs, so basically, we're gonna be running a main down 35 into the project, and then we're actually stubbing some pipe up into Apple Lane, and they may do their own capital project to loop the system back up into the water main. But that's gotta get through their Board of Trustees, and it's not part of their capital plan yet, but they're looking at it as a advantageous thing to do while we're in here doing this.
Well, I just have one other question, too. As you do it in phases, when one phase is complete, that means completely, complete, right? Landscaping done, lights done, sidewalks in, everything's done, right? Before you finish and go to the next phase?
Well, those are the discussions we're having with Public Works. I think there is, I can understand where you're going with this and trying to get as much complete as possible. There's certainly not a big benefit to having like surface pavement and kind of final striping and street trees and all of that before the houses are done. But I can understand your comment about timely, you know, and having it be a little bit, but...
People shouldn't be in their place for two years before that, that phase is complete.
I know, but a lot of it, too, is thinking about the next 20 years, and if you end up with a subpar product because you rushed to get it done, so people had things early, and now the trees are too low, and they're going to the wrong spot, and the driveway, you know, all the surface pavements all beat up because it went down too soon, and so we try to balance...
This is a concern that staff has as well, and exactly where phases begin and end. And for final, we're gonna work out a fairly detailed list of how these phases are gonna work. Because it is, it's been an issue in other projects, not necessarily their project, but across town. So it's a thing that we want to work on in terms of being very clear.
Can a developer only take out 15 permits per year? Is that...
Not in this zone.
This zone?
Not in this zone, no, outside of this zone.
All right, it's been a long night, you've got nothing else for me?
No, you don't.
I really appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you very much.
I think Josh and Cliff are the ones that...
I'll study this little Bible between now and... A Bible study someday. All right, next item.
Business. Oh, there's one more to go? Oh, I thought we were...
Strumpf.
Two more to go, technically.
15 Edith Mary Way, F3.
Chairman, I, those who don't know me, I'm Cliff Strumpf, the owner of Standish Auto Care. Just looking to relocate on my property at 15 Edith Mary Way from the current address, 129 Osby Trail West. I got the septic's all in, and the foundation's in. The structure that I'm penning to is existing structure that's been there for four years. We just want to move our business over there and have a future. Where we're at now, we don't know what's, you know, if things sell over there, I don't own the building, I lease it, so that's one of the reasons why we want to move. Kind of give you all a letter Y, you know? My son's future, I'll be retiring in a few years, but it'll be his future over there, and so we'd like to move over there and continue doing what we do for Standish. Almost 11 years in the business here, and serve the community well.
Love business. Okay. Anything, Scott?
So this is primarily a use approval, there's not a lot of new structure involved, and what is, is already permitted through the Code Office for personal use, depending on this, the decision of the board here tonight. This is also, the use is a special exemption use, so he did previously go to the Appeals Board to get their okay prior to coming here. So he's already gone through them, and their review includes traffic hazards, impact to water, other nuisance issues like dust, smoke, and noise. They go over the septic, they make sure there's no sensitive wildlife impacts, and they actually, in a way that most things in the town don't do, do look at impact to values. And they have given him approval from there for the special exemption, so now it's on to the board for site plan. Again, it's largely use, the property is largely, is built for the most part and permitted. I know that there were some issues with permitting in the Code Office on this site prior, that has all been resolved. The applicant has worked very carefully with the Code Office and made sure that everything is up to snuff, and we're, and we're good on that front.
And I think, I think there's, should be a copy, too, of the appraisal. I had a guy do appraisal on abutting properties, to make sure they weren't gonna be really bothered by the business, to make sure that was done.
I have a question.
Sure. It doesn't really say that.
It looks like the foundation is done already for this project, right?
Yes, sir, it is, yeah.
Normally, I guess, how did that get approved?
I've already got the permit through the town to put the, put the garage there, but I signed a letter of contempt that if I, if I didn't get approved through the board, that I wouldn't use it for commercial use.
I understand, okay.
Yeah.
See, my question. Normally, the projects that we approved have not started yet, so that, that's what made me ask the question.
Yeah.
This, you know, has started.
Yes, sir, yeah, I understand.
In your letter, you say there's 17 parking spaces, I see 22 on the little site plan.
Yeah, there's, there's a little more than 17. We're putting up...
22 is the right number?
Yeah, that would be the right total, yeah.
And on the application, you indicate your fire protection's from a hydrant from public water main, you're on a well out there, there's no, no hydrant anywhere.
No hydrant there, no.
So that should have been like other... Does that make any difference with the fire chief? He's all set. Just confirming there's no hydrant in a well. And, anything else?
I have a few concerns.
Go for it.
So, I mean, I understand the desire to move the business to a lot that you have a lot of room on.
Yeah.
But it is a new business. And so with a new business, usually, we do take a look at buffering for other properties right around.
Yeah.
There's, you know, you don't typically have signage in that area because it's not zoned for businesses, so any of the ordinances don't really apply to that. When we have parking, usually, there's a set parking number of spaces based on the I feel like this is a great idea for a project, but I don't feel like we're talking about it like we would with other businesses.
I mean, it meets the parking requirements.
Does it exceed the parking requirements?
There is no maximum parking requirements in this zone, only in the Form Based Code.
Well, this business doesn't typically happen in this zone.
And it is permitted in use with special exemption, so, and he's got a special exemption approval, so it is, it is an allowed use in this zone.
That's why I went to the Appeals Board.
Right.
It's all family, abutting property around me, it's all family, there's no... I own the property in front of me, beside me, and then my brothers are on the right of me. I mean, there's no, out of family, people that own this that would have a problem with me putting the business here.
So with, like, the driveway going in, and there're gonna be any changes? I guess I'm not seeing the lay of the land. I really am not sure what questions or what safeguards to put in for neighbors. So I know that you say you own all around it, but there's...
I have no neighbors. I have, you wanted to see the garage from the road? No, no.
Yeah.
I have a question, I have, I have a question about the location, because it says 15 Edith Mary Way, and when I put that into Google, it takes me off from River Road. But then there's also an Edith Mary Way off from Bonny Eagle Road, 23.
That's the one.
Yeah, it's 15 Edith Mary Way, off Bonny Eagle Road, yeah.
Well, 15 Edith Way, Mary Way takes you... Why is there two Edith Mary Ways?
That's Google's problem, I don't know. That's, that shouldn't be...
Shouldn't, okay. All right.
And...
So it is off from 35?
Off 35, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, it's on the, this one.
The big one shows a little bit to setbacks, it's, barely read it, but I think it's 62 feet to the, I don't know if it is on this, but on the left side, and 55 on the right side, and 58. This is from the shop, the property. And you live beyond the complex in the log cabin at the end of the road? And my new house, 120 feet away, 125 feet away? 130 feet away? I can't read it.
130 feet roughly, yeah.
Yeah.
So it gives a little bit more perspective as to how it's laid out.
You can have a lot of people going down River Road.
And Cliff, you already have the existing garage on the property, this is the extension, based on plans, sorry. You have an existing garage, you already have three bays, and you're adding, you know...
Three more bays, yeah.
Yeah, so you already have a garage there that was...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So how many cars do you plan to be working on at once? You know, is there like any limit to the, you're gonna have cars there for car parts, or is it...
No car parts, no, there'll be no junk cars setting around. What I work on daily, weekly, I mean, we work on seven, 12, 15 cars a day.
So you get Napa or O'Reilly or somebody delivers the parts for your shop?
Yeah, yeah.
I forgot my snap-on hat tonight, I feel left out.
With their retail business. Yes, I guess I would...
I mean, the hours are 8 to 5, I mean, it's not gonna, like, it's gonna impact anything. The building's well insulated, there'll be no noise there, I mean, our Matt down here on 1, you know, 129 Osby Trail West, same thing, 90% of the time, our doors are shut. Like I said, 8 to 5, it's not like we're out there pounding things at 5:00 in the morning or at midnight, it's not gonna impact the neighborhood.
I think those would be helpful things to add.
I don't think so, I think that you're, sorry, that's not, sorry. You're, we're stepping into the fact of like, you know, this is not something that we're... You want to support business, Carolyn, but then you're turning around and telling someone like, this is not, like, you're getting in kind of like real deep in this, where this is the constant thing where you're like, yeah, wait a minute, you know, let's hear, then... oh, hey, wait a minute, here.
You want to make a comment, Todd, you can make a comment, but you don't have to comment about me, anything.
Well, as I say, you sit here, Carolyn, it's like, as I said, he's coming in and asking us to, he's already gone through, through appeals board, there's an existing garage. Yeah, so the case is that, so the case is that all we're asked to do is to stay on task here, not, in a sense, tell him how to run his business to the point of telling him how many bays, what his hours are, the rest of it.
I'm not doing that, he said that he plans to operate at eight to five.
Yeah.
I think for the neighbors, since this is a new use in this area that he got, uh, a variance for, that it's only fair for everybody around him to know what the operating hours are, to know what to expect.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Right.
Well, it's in the record, it's already stated it, so.
Right.
Yeah.
No body work, no automotive?
Absolutely no body work.
Painting and all that stuff, all like good aroma.
In all the years that Cliff has been up on twenty-five, we've had not one complaint.
This is not a new business, in my mind, Stanish Auto Care has been there forever and he's moving his business from one place to another, so getting into, like, you know, what's going, you know, what's going on seems to be very kind of, in a sense, you know, outside of the parameters of the, or the purview, and its reality is this is a, is the current business owner who's been a good, good neighbor and a good, a good part of Stanish, so.
Mention of a, uh, waiting area and bathroom, there's nothing on the site plan, I assume it's in that three-
Yeah, we, yeah, the bathroom's already in, the bathroom's in, septic's in, well's all in, and the new, and the new shop that I'm building will have a new, uh, twenty by twenty waiting area. I had, I didn't, I didn't draw the waiting area, but it's, in the new building, it's adjoining my shop, it's already there.
It's going to be where one of the overhead doors are?
What's that, sir?
It's going to be where one of the overhead doors are?
Yeah, it's going to be in, what, but it's, it's a side entrance office door and that will be all framed up on the inside for, for an office, similar where I'm at right now, like I have now.
That's only about eight feet wide. You must be going to either take half of that bay?
Yeah, twenty by twenty, going to take half of that first bay, because I have six bays total, I, I plan on using four.
All right. And the office is right in that front section as well?
Yes, sir.
So that's convenient for the customer.
Usually people just drop their cars and leave.
I have a lot of people that actually do wait, I have a TV and everything in there and they have a lounge, it's, a lot of people do wait. Yeah.
All right. Let's see if there's anything in the report here. Have to discuss con, uh, waivers for contours and, uh, scaled site plan. The first two items we need to discuss. Well, anybody from the board have any other questions?
No.
I don't. We can open it up to the public before we get into any. Come forward and give us your name.
Hi, my name's Terri Shore, I live across the street, and they are great neighbors, I think they're great, their kids are a delight on the bus. Um, I just had, um, a question about the disposal of hazardous waste like oil for other things, what's the plan?
Yeah, well, same thing I have right now, I have, uh, three hundred gallon-
Do the mic, sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. Disposal of any things is, if I do now, it's, it's all recycled oil, it goes into three hundred gallon plastic drums, which is on a cement dike, and it's, it's pumped out whenever I need it pumped. Usually goes to, like, Brian Lovett or whoever, he's using it for their recycle furnaces, but no chemicals are ever on the ground, no more than is right now, so that will never be a problem.
I just had two other questions.
Right ahead.
Is it subject to inspection? Like, you know how gas stations get inspected to make sure that their tanks don't leak, et cetera? Is this, and if not, could it?
The, the gas stations are for underground tanks, those-
Yeah, this is not underground.
Right, and I know it's not exactly the same, I'm asking, is it subject to inspection for leaks? Since this is drinking water for families.
Yeah, I mean, that's, he mentioned the, the concrete dike is the, had materials to be placed, so there's, uh, two levels of, of, of-
So, so the answer is we don't know if it's subject to inspection, or we don't think it is?
Unless the state does, the town does not have a local inspection, though if anything is noticed to be wrong, it can be reported to the code officer, he would definitely be interested to hear that.
So, and I, I get that you're following all the things you have been and you haven't had a leak or a spill or someone hasn't backed into something and cracked it, do you hold liability insurance that will help with remediation and clean up the water, should this impact people?
Um, we do have insurance on it, we have a million dollar insurance policy on our garage businesses, in case there's any problems like that. But the only thing that we ever have really on site is a six gallon gas can that we need around for a car, but it's always just recycled oil that we take out of a vehicle, we don't have anything else on site to worry about, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks.
Elmer Farley again, and, uh, I'm pleased to see a businessman in the town of Stanish, new business. Instead of houses, he's helped, going to help pay the taxes, he's not going to spend our tax, we're not going to pay their tax, but anyway, I, I appreciate him. You guys have a good day, look like that housing development is pretty cut and dry. Have a good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Cliff, you have, if you do have a spill, you have to report it to DUT and they just come do a quick inspection, right?
I mean, it's like any garage, if it's, if it's any, almost half, I mean, we got pads that we soak it all up with immediately, but we don't, I mean, in all the years, really, we've never had any serious problems, so.
Didn't expect it.
If there was, it would be, there'd be a phone call immediately, there was something that we couldn't handle, but it, it just wouldn't be, because not only is that plastic drum double lined, it's in a, it's in a big cement dike, like a half of a septic system.
Secondary containment.
Yeah, so it's not going anywhere, so, yeah.
All right. So, based on the photographs and the two not to scale site plans, what's the board feel about granting a waiver on an official two-scale site plan and two-foot contours? I'm not sure two-foot contours are going to show much of anything, as flat as it looks on these pictures.
I would, it would be one.
It's all flat there, it's flat and dry, yeah.
Would agree.
Everybody go?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, yep, I got pictures. I'm okay with proceeding.
Might have contours in the foundation excavation.
Do you make that motion, Frank?
You want to read it off?
Yes, I'll, as I move the wave, one eighty-one dash seventy-one submission requirements, that the site plan be drawn to scale and include two-foot contour lines.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, grant a waiver on drawing a scaled site plan including two-foot contour lines. For the discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? unanimous. Uh, and then, I'll move to find the application for thirteen Edith Marie Way, map three, lot eighty-three, be complete as presented-
Seconded.
With waivers. Still good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Been moved and seconded, deem the application complete, discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? unanimous. Carolyn didn't vote, sorry.
Well, I, I should have said something before we took a vote on that.
Abstaining or voting no?
Uh, well, I just, um, the, the, um, appeals board required a town, I mean, an appraisal of the property, and I think the appraisal is not so much to, um, protect, like, your business, it's just to make sure that it's not adversely affecting anybody around them. Um, so I know we have this note from, um, a certified real estate appraiser. But it's really... You know, I guess, I guess I just don't feel like that actually tells us a whole lot in there, like, I'm all for you moving your business and being successful there, um, I think the town is trying to streamline that process for you by having the code enforcement officer allow the foundation anything that go in, but I do think we have some responsibility for just protecting the people around the business and just to make sure that everything is as it says it is. And I'm not sure I feel comfortable with that without seeing the property, without-
Well, the appraiser guy that you're holding the sheet, he's been doing it for almost fifty years, he spent the time doing it, and, and that's why he took it to the bank, had it stamped and approved for that reason.
I just, I just wish he had added a little substance to it.
He added what the appeals board asked him for?
I said, uh, an appraisal.
That's what the appeals board-
An appraisal of any of the surrounding.
Well, I was looking at the dates on this. I, I, you know, as much as I want to do due diligence for your business, I'm just trying to also take into consideration the people that are around.
And I understand that, that's why we went to the, to do that, to make sure that nobody in our area was going to be impacted by it, I don't believe that it will be, no more than it will be if I'm down on twenty-five.
Right.
Hence, that's why it's in the memorandum, Carolyn.
Todd, be quiet, please.
Oh, I, if you're not going to be quiet, then why don't, why should I be?
I'm just stating my concern.
I get it.
Let's move forward, please.
If we want to include a condition that the appeals board has to say, someone, representative or staff member of representing the appeals board has to say that this appraisal meets that condition, which I believe it does, but if we want the appeals board to say that, then-
I think, I think we already voted.
Say that and then it's good to go, but-
I'm not going down that road.
Okay.
Yeah, because the copy of the appeals board findings have been included in the packets, that's the whole point. I don't know what more we were expecting of them.
I'm fine to move on with the final motion.
Staff went down through site plan criteria and the only thing they recommended was a note, or a condition relative, uh, to lighting and he, that's been added. Uh, number two, all new lighting must be in compliance with requirements of one eighty-one eighteen, that's basically a shoebox style light that shoots down so you don't have floods.
No projectile, yeah?
Yeah. We got some pretty good pitches here, I got a good view of what, I don't think I need to site walk. All the members of the board?
Not me.
All right. I'll read the motion, we'll see if anybody wants to make it. Move that the board grant approval under the provisions of the Stanish Land Use Code for the site plan application submitted by Clifford Strumpf, did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. The F threw me off. For the property at fifteen Edith Marie Way in Stanish, map three, lot eighty-three, having found it to meet the site plan review criteria of one eighty-one seventy-three, the performance standards of one eighty-one five, and all other relevant standards of the zoning ordinance to the greatest extent practical with the following conditions. This approval is dependent upon and limited to its proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed by the applicant or applicant's agent, either orally or in writing, and that any variation from the plans, proposal, or supporting documents are subject to review and approval by the planning board, except for minor changes which the code enforcement officer may approve. And number two, all new lighting must be in compliance with the requirements of one eighty-one eighteen.
I make the motion as presented.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded, grant approval for the discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? There you go. Okay, we're down two, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thanks.
A public hearing.
I edited the, uh-
Yes, I'm all set to go through?
Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate it, appreciate you guys staying late tonight.
No problem.
I edited the, uh, address on Google Maps.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you for staying late.
You're welcome, Todd.
Keep him busy.
Take care.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you for your understanding.
You're in trouble.
Thank you.
One eighty-one dot land?
Yeah, overtime, we hit them for overtime.
This is overtime.
I want overtime.
Looks like one eighty-one dot land, I like that.
Yeah, is that, that's what I was about to say, that's like a weird one.
Chapter one eighty-one, comma.
All right, so the public hearing is for changes to chapter one eighty-one land use relevant to the primarily elderly housing, but a small amount of village housing as well. Um, the ordinance committee is discussed with a developer and then in their own review that some of the requirements for layout and, uh, structure of our elderly housing use, which is a particular type of development that we allow in town, wasn't actually very conducive to actually building that type of development, so there is a few things that we felt we could tweak.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
And, um, that's primarily to allow for larger developments, they're previously capped at forty-eight units, to allow them to have a wider variety of, of unit types, they're previously required to be in buildings of a minimum of four units in a building, and this allows for single and double unit buildings with a maximum of fifty percent of the dwelling units being in single detached. There's still, um, some, somewhat vague language on clustering to reduce impacts to the land.
This is like an investor, a yacht, uh, yacht cumbling housing type?
The only one we've actually permitted in town is Garden Side, but it is, uh, Garden Side Estates off of, um, Rose.
By the bed?
Yep. But it's, uh, yeah, it's intended, it's a fifty-five and up community-
Or the one that's-
And it's intended to be a sort of condo-type ownership where everyone's there, they've got shared amenities, it requires them to have a community building and things like that, and the thought was having a larger development, if you have the land, because this doesn't change density requirements, you still have to have just as much land to go with each unit, that, that can support better amenities, a better community for, for that development. And the final change is that it does reduce some of the setbacks and ties them to the zone versus building height, because it previously was fifty-foot setback for single story and a hundred-foot setback for two-story, no matter what zone you were in, including things like the form-based code zone where there are very small setbacks and are trying to encourage this type of denser development, and this was having the opposite effect. So I changed it, so it's by zone, so it's a twenty-five foot in the form-based code and village center zones and a fifty-foot in the residential zone, which is the other zone it's allowed in, and then, uh, the final change is to the village housing, which is a non-age restricted but similar type of development, um, and making that a, the same setbacks of twenty-five feet in the village center and the form-based codes and, um, I think, yeah, we left that at this because it's only allowed in those zones anyway.
There you go. Would the chair like to say anything? You're the only one here, so.
I'll have a comment, kind of.
What was the reason for these changes, was it development or? Well, a developer brought it to our attention, um, they, they were looking at a property out off Boundary Road to do a very large scale development, these new developments aren't allowed in that zone, it's in the rural zone, and there are a variety of reasons for that, uh, not the least of which is that these types of developments are exempt from our growth management ordinance and therefore don't, aren't limited in how many units you could put in a year. And changing that, so the council talked about it, the ordinance committee talked about it, and they decided not to go with those changes, so this, none of these changes are going to help the development that actually brought it up, but the ordinance committee felt that it was a, there were some very reasonable points for these other elements and that they might want to make the- points for these other elements and that they might want to make these changes anyway so that future developments where they are allowed could make use of it.
I have a question. In regards to residential growth, does the town have any boundaries they put on, I mean, hypothetical, let's say that we had four more projects, five hundred people, five hundred houses each. Is there any overarching growth management that would throttle that back?
We have a growth management ordinance. The, that does heavily restrict development in the rural zone. And there's a very limited amount of building permits that can be issued every year in that zone. And that's true for the residential and rural residential zones as well. Slightly less restrictive, but still there's a cap. And then there's a cap on the total ones for the town, but there are then exemptions from that, that ordinance, which includes elderly housing and includes anything in the form-based code districts.
I see. Okay.
None of us are elderly yet, so you don't have to worry about it.
You sure?
For yourself. I'm getting elderly.
Good.
So we can close the public hearing?
Motion to public? Close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm moved. Any further discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
No second. Sorry, we've got to say that.
Sorry, Andrew, I'm going to back you from now on.
Well, it wasn't nine.
Got to wake him up. Yeah, you second that, Andrew?
Now you know that they can go to the- You're fighting it.
No, no, school board used to have like this invitation, like, you know.
Thank you for putting up with this.